Reviewing the Renewable Energy Report. We, as always, will be hearing from staff and then everyone will have opportunity for three-minute comments followed by go-backs. Please just indicate it to me to let me know.
I think our team's ready down there. We have Marty Smith, our COO, and Jeff Plattenberg, our Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Transportation, and Jessica Gillis. And I think we're going to start with the Renewable Energy Report. And we have Justin Moss coming in too, who's our Director of Office of Facilities Management, Facilities and Transportation. They've done a lot of great work. And Mr. Smith, if you want to set it up. Are you doing CIP first?
I believe we were going to start with CIP.
Oh, okay.
We've got the Renewable Energy Report up there behind us, but I believe we were going to start with the CIP. We, I apologize, I was not at our last CIP work session. I was ill. I'm back. I'm not quite 100%, but I'm feeling good enough to be at the table. And I know that there are lots of great questions about the CIP at our last work session. And so, we'd like to take an opportunity to address some of the questions that came out of that work session and then help get a little bit more direction for moving forward as we think about the upcoming vote.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening. You know, if you recall, we've gone ahead and introduced the CIP on December 19th, which was a Thursday, where Ms. Gillis went ahead and presented to the school board in a public meeting his new business. We did have a public hearing on Tuesday, January 7th. Then we had this work session, and which followed, I know we had a snow day. And then, of course, we have the work session here today. And we will be having a public hearing on the 27th of January, and then February 6th we'll be presenting for action. As a result of not only the presentation, but also going into taking a look at what was in the CIP and the last work session, there were, just for adification, there was a lot of feedback that we had received, not only in the two-by-two meetings that we had, which was a great idea by Dr. Braybrand, and also the school board chair and vice chair, to go ahead and make sure that we all, because it's so much information, and it was coming at the confluence of the same time with budget, that the two-by-twos helped us have a conversation with the regional assistant superintendent and school board members about what exactly were going on, not only in their regions, but also division-wide. But at the last work session, there was a lot of feedback and input that we received. And in a minute, Ms. Gillis is going to kind of go through that. What we did is, at the last work session, we attempted to capture all of that information so that we could have the reference points for, for folks to go ahead and us have a further conversation about whether or not we captured the intent of what was desired. And then also, there was a request to go ahead and fill out, provide page 40, which we did from the previous, 46 from the previous CIP, and then page 40 for this year's CIP, to go ahead and start fleshing that out. And we have those two documents that we're going to go ahead and pull up, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gillis and let her go ahead and, and kind of walk us through, and then open it up certainly for discussion.
Good evening. So, if we could switch to the other document. So, we had posted two additional documents for your consideration tonight. The first one that we're pulling up right here is just a list of requests that we received to the proposed CIP, either through the work session last week or through our two-by-two meetings with each independent, individual board members. So, I'd like to just walk through what the requests are, our internal responses, staff responses, and then whether it would be incorporated into this year's draft CIP, or if that's something in a future CIP, or it's provided through another resource. So, the first one is provide a capacity analysis at centers and alternative programs. Our FTS response is that further survey and space utilization of analysis for each site will need to be conducted. And once a survey of the site is conducted, a methodology for calculating capacity of these sites will need to either be developed, given, will need to be developed, given that administrative offices may be co-located at centers and alternative program locations in addition to the instructional programs. So, we anticipate that being provided in future CIPs, not in this 2125 CIP. It's also connected to two next steps, number 217 and 221, which 217 is disaggregate the data on enrollment and building capacity for alternative programs and special education, and 221 with increased capacity becoming available in our alternative schools, consider developing a 2E alternative school. So, I want to tie those together. The second one, on the FCPS facility and membership dashboard, overlay the schools with AAP centers on all the maps displaying school capacity. That will be available on our FCPS facilities membership dashboard, and we provided the link. The third one, description of what is considered as core instruction, music, and art usage in elementary schools. The facilities and membership dashboard includes methodology for how school capacity is calculated, and it includes art, band and strings, music, and special education programs. This is also available at that same link. There's a little video, so it's a PowerPoint presentation from a few years ago, and there's a video to walk you through how schools are utilized and how capacity is calculated. This is also tied to next step 223, have staff clarify, and then the board look at how we define capacity and how we define core programs. So, this can start our discussion of how we do that. So, that's the existing, how staff calculates capacity, and then we can have further discussion. Four.
Jessica, can I just ask?
Of course.
A board member was asking, you know, we have new members. Is this on Board Docs, or is this a document?
No. It's a live site. This, this is on Board Docs. This page, this right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this was posted to Board Docs this weekend.
Okay.
Yep. Pardon? Did everybody find it? Okay. Okay. So, number four, are there any zoning restrictions on using open spaces as classrooms? Our response is elementary school ed specs include, which is education specifications, include outdoor classrooms and are code compliant with no impacts to zoning or the FAR, which is the floor area ratio. Number five, details on net zero and new construction. This is kind of tied to include, the number six, include get-to-green in the ed specs. To incorporate net zero in the new construction updates, we would have policy and regulations that may be revised, and then also, staff is currently working on comprehensive design and construction cost analysis, as we are looking into how much that would increase our construction costs. To incorporate get-to-green in the ed specs, the existing ed spec revision process would be followed, and we have a flow chart of that, which also can be posted. Number seven, share sustainability measures included in the ed spec and the next steps to revise the ed spec to include additional measures. So, this is a little bit of vocabulary for us, like we use design guides for how we construct our schools, which are tied to ed specs. But the design guides and project specifications include sustainability measures such as LED lighting, light harvesting, VRF, mechanical systems, oversized BMP, cisterns, native and non-toxic landscaping, landscaping coverage which exceeds code requirements, pervious surface pavers, interior motion sensors, energy recovery, outdoor air units, solar panels, and they provide hot water only in limited use, bike racks, bottle fill stations, and low-E energy window systems. This is also tied to the next step 219, provide options to build sustainability into CIP with ed specs, and that we anticipate to be included in future CIPs, as staff has work to do on that. Number eight, amend the CIP fiscal year 2021 to '25 to include net zero. To go along with the other responses we gave, this is similar, and so we would anticipate that for a few, a future CIP. Number nine, update school lists for priority recommended boundary adjustment studies and boundary feasibility studies. So, we'll get to that, page 40, the draft response that staff came up with when I finish with these last few. For Oakton High School, can we stop current construction to include additional capacity needs? So, at this point, it's not financially advantageous to amend the existing construction and design contracts. Staff would provide additional detail in a follow-up briefing. So, the quick question was if we don't have enough space for what we're anticipating, can we stop and add space now? So, it's not as simple as stopping and starting because of the size of the contracts. Number 11, how school facility buildings need to be changed for student rates and responsibilities? Because SRNR policy changes were updated in 2019 of July, changes that impact to facility buildings would be examined by following the existing ed spec revision process with ISD and DSS. So, we would anticipate that for future CIPs. 12, include a count of student transfers for all schools. So, we're amending the facilities dashboard to accommodate this request with our membership. And we left the link. This is also tied to next step 220, provide link to transfer breakdown by school. 13, provide status details on the Pinewood Lakes Bonded School. The Pinewood Lakes site, also referred to in the CIP as the Route 1 Elementary School, is still included in the proposed CIP. Project schedules included in the proposed CIP are evaluated annually based on existing conditions. The Route 1 Elementary School has been proposed to commence planning in fiscal year '27 due to available capacity in the area. So, we do have a trademark for this year's CIP. We have included it. If there's something more that we were looking for out of that one, just let us know. 14, begin working on a new renovation queue. The school board has directed staff to begin working on developing a new queue as a next step, number 222, from the January 13th, 2020 work session. 15, provide potential sites where admin can be housed. We would anticipate that being included in the future CIP. Analyze enrollment and capacity of elementary schools in Clifton. Clifton Area Elementary School has been listed as a boundary feasibility study for consideration by the school board on page, the draft page 40. And then 17, can capacity calculations include trailers? We felt like this needed additional discussion, since currently in our CIP, we only include capacity that is paid for through bond funds. And 18, add pop-outs to describe that special education program impacts on school capacity, and we are looking for a little bit more clarification on that one.
So, with the summary of that, and what that really provided for is some of the ones that we've mentioned, I think really are going to require further conversation. One of the statements, two of the schools that we'll mention in there, one was the Pinewood Lakes discussion. And I know that the consideration was that we have an opportunity down there. And I think when we talk about the Pinewood Lakes and the possibility for it, and we talk about the desire for arts and academies down in that area, it's not unlike the conversations that we've had about the old Mount Vernon High School and some of the discussions that went on with that. I know that the Magisterial District member representatives down there, both Ms. Darin and our COFACs and Ms. Corbett Sanders have been well aware and have advised me, hey, you know, that's an opportunity, there's a gem sitting down there, and what are we going to do? If we are collectively going to take a look at something like that, it's going to require a lot more further study really for us. But I think the fact of the matter is that that provides, in this CIP, the benefit for us to make sure that we include the language so that we do take action and continue on. Another one, in addition to that one, that I know we're going to have further discussion on, is the Clifton Elementary School site. Although we recommend area relook, if you will, for boundary adjustment in that region, specifically, that school site keeps coming up. And I think the desire would be for us to clarify, either staff coming back with a full recommendation on that, taking a look at if it would be advisable to reuse or repurpose that existing facility, or in accordance with board policy, should that be something that the school board deemed that is not functional or usable for us, would it be deemed appropriate to turn back to the, to the county, because that's in accordance with our board policy, or, you know, some other program or initiative there as well. So, each of those unique elements would require further discussion and further conversation. But certainly, if it's the desire of this body to go ahead and incorporate statements within this CIP about that, to that effect, so that we can at least get the work going, that's something that we're totally receptive to. And then, of course, we have page 40 that we've gone ahead and revised, and that is the next one that we'll provide up there, just for your perusal. I won't go through each of the individual ones there. I don't know if Ms. Gillis wanted us to, or if we wanted to go ahead and turn it over to you to have the further conversation. So, with that, Madam Chair, I thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to at least kick this conversation off, because I know it's going to be a very thoughtful work session. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will hear from Mr. Frisch, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Quick question, looking at this new page 40, which I gather represents our conversation from the previous work session. One of the things that is interesting and that parents have asked me about is the timeline. Many of these list potential scoping for, or potential boundaries and scoping in the fall of 2019, spring 2019. That's not correct, right? And how difficult is it to get a better grasp on how long all of that would take?
Well, again, the, the original scoping, the potential scoping of spring 2019 is something that, obviously, we're in 2020, so it really is, I mean, we're taking a look at what was already provided.
Right.
And that's the purpose of saying potential, because I often give the explanation that shift happens, things change within the timeline that we originally planned. Some of the changes occurred, the example that I mentioned about the Pinewood Lakes Elementary School. We had a couple of circumstances that occurred when that first project was up. We had it as a new elementary school, similar to having these boundary timelines and adjustments. Then we had the opportunity with the Fort Belvoir Grant to build another facility on post, and we were successful in receiving that. And we built, in addition, and the board, the governing body at the time, decided to increase the size in a work session of one of the other elementary schools to see what would be an appropriate size for an elementary school, which is a frequent conversation. And so, the combination of those few things and maybe a couple others, we ended up building the capacity, and we didn't have that immediate need for capacity purposes only for Pinewood Lakes. So, it shifted. Some of the ones that we talked about here, I know in the Braddock District, Ms. McLaughlin had been pretty adamant about us looking at Wakefield Forest and a way forward with that, because it was overcrowding and untenable. We had a little bit of a different change in some of the surrounding schools that were going to be impacted by that. We not only had Wakefield Forest, but we had Old Creek and Little Run, and we saw some adjustments in those capacity enrollments. And we made the determination last year, well, let's just wait to see if our enrollment figures this year will validate or support that change. And in fact, while, one of the things Ms. McLaughlin had said we needed to do is, while we take a look at what would be an appropriate size of that existing facility, keeping in mind the concerns of the community, making sure that it was the balance between what we have as our current school board policy-approved, appropriate size of a school, elementary school of 950 students, realizing that that would be too much of a burden in the community, what would be an adequate size? Would the site accommodate that? So, that could be part of the conversation, because that was some of the feedback that was being bannered about. So, we start with these initial plans and the scoping, but certainly, the realistic timeline of that, I know Mr. Smith wanted to go ahead and weigh in, but...
What I just wanted to say is that with the, the meetings and the discussions that we're having now, we can certainly take a look at that potential scoping date, and then we shift everything from that. So, if we were going to adjust the potential scoping, then we would adjust the potential boundary and then the anticipated effective date based on any changes that we discuss.
We can get an updated columns before we vote on the CIP.
Absolutely. And that's the purpose. Yeah, that's the purpose of the work session. And some of that, I'm sorry.
No, that, that was just the, so we can get those changes made.
And the last thing I'll say is Langley-McLean's a perfect example, right? That was amendment to the CIP by the last body. The initial plan was to go out for the spring scoping, and we've, we've done that. We now have an obligation to go back. What is that timeline? What's going to actually occur? It, it may not be next year. That was informed through the process as well. So, yeah, but for the purposes, Mr. Smith was spot-on. I should have just answered that at the beginning, rather than telling you how to build a watch. But the reality is, it's, it's to be set by you all before you approve.
So, I guess what I would say is that I think people expect that there's going to be some changes to the timelines. Not everything goes to plan, and it'll be on staff to let the school board know when things are going a little bit off-plan. And then the school board members can be relaying that information to their communities. Particularly, and I'll bring up Shreve Wood again. I've had several parents talk to me about Shreve Wood, wondering why they've not, and I've relayed to them information about how the, the schedule is not exactly as it was. But we need to do a better job of communicating those, those changes in timelines, so that it's not just sitting out there on the internet with people knowing that it's no longer spring of 2019, right? The second thing I would note, and we can talk about this in, in the go-back and after the energy report, is that there's tremendous interest in amending the CIP to make sure that our EUIs, our energy use units, or intensity, is 20 to 25, which would make us net zero-ready for all new construction and renovations. I believe our current average for just our schools is 54. In order for the solar that we're putting in to actually have an impact, well, I mean, it's going to have an impact, in order for us to operate off the solar that we're putting in and not additional energy, I think you have to be in the 20 range. So, we've got a lot of work to do, but I think there's tremendous interest from board members that I've spoken to about amending the CIP so that those new construction projects are net zero-ready. And I look forward to talking about that more. Thanks.
Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Cohen.
So, Carl, I really appreciate your comments, because you really tapped into my primary concerns with draft page 40. I guess I'm trying to better understand why this page looks like it does, because this isn't saying CIP FY 20, 20 to 24, it's 2125. So, all the way up until tonight, the public, and in this case for me, if you look at the top of Table 7, half of the boundary projects are in the Braddock District. And this, these were three boundary proposals that the community had a very strong reaction to, and that I worked with staff on this past academic year to talk about where were we with the numbers and the projections. And so, all three of these being listed here for the board to vote on in just a few weeks don't show any revision at all. So, anyone visiting the, the document in my community, as late as now, Dr. Braybrand tonight, they're going to be upset with the school system, and they're going to be upset with me, and the out-larges may get some of it too. Because this doesn't reflect all the conversations we've been having for probably at least the last six months, if now almost, further back to that. So, this document truly has to be revised before we vote on it. And the sooner we can do that, the better, because we already decided that Little Run's capacity was fluctuating back and forth all over the place, so that shouldn't even be listed there at all. The Oakview, Old Creek, same thing. There's, you know, right now, there's been conversations about, you know, the Oakview community that currently attends Oakview doesn't want to have to leave Oakview, and so, until we have a better sense of what hap, what's happening with the Old Creek community, we're just, it's not a burning priority, and we know we've got boundary priorities all over the county. And then finally, with Wakefield Forest, that was supposed to be, we were scoping to see how large the building could be built, and there might not be any boundary at all. So, at minimum, I would say, Mr. Plattenberg and Dr. Braybrand, having a document that says potential scoping and potential boundary and effective date, our families pay really careful attention to that. So, I am 1,000% supportive of that things change. What I would just ask is that you all really understand, this is probably one of the most emotional things that our families feel, so we have to be extra careful and update and adjust this as soon as possible. We can't have things just staying the way they looked from before.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
May I just comment to that?
Please.
You know, thank you very much for that clarification, Ms. McLaughlin, because clearly, to stress the points that I should have at the beginning, when I say draft for consideration purposes on this document, perhaps I should have just eliminated any of those dates that are passed. To me, rather, that's rather intuitive and obvious, but you're correct. Somebody looking at this thinking, hey, there's no progress being made. I'd like to go ahead and, as we get this feedback, basically update it, based upon what we just said, you know, remove Little Run, take it off. I would like to go ahead then and make the Wakefield Forest, because staff and have the feedback provided, we've taken a look at this, and I do believe I could put an addition on there to accommodate up to 800 students, that would, in fact, alleviate that. That's part of the conversation I thought we might get into in this work session. However, that being said, if the desire is to go ahead and have staff do it offline and bring it back, I certainly would like to go ahead and make those changes as we've done in other documents. But I really appreciate you stressing the importance of people's interpretation, so that we could clarify that that is not the case, that it is, in fact, for the consideration, for exactly the feedback that you provided. Jessica, did you have anything you want to add to that? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I would like to ask, I know, but I said my remarks, and then he's, you know, Mr. Plattenberg's responding, but if he didn't finish answering, then...
No, 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 no. Your time ended before that.
Okay. I understand my time ended. Staff then responds to what I said, but if staff didn't finish it, then isn't it during my time? They're supposed to finish answering the initial questions?
No, no, we stopped time. We stopped time for when they speak.
I, I understand that, but how it works is I say all of my remarks in my three minutes, then they respond, and it doesn't count against my time. If they don't answer the questions that I asked during my time, I, we typically say, but you didn't answer this question. That's all. I'm not going to comment.
That's fine. So, we can flag that, and in a go-back, we could, potentially, staff can have another opportunity to address it.
We can talk offline, but that's typically not how it's done.
Okay, Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Tolan.
I appreciate, I think, for all of us new coming onto the board, you know, obviously, this is an interesting process, that one that we would like to learn a little bit more about. To that end, there's a few kind of procedural questions that I have. The first is, this sort of feels like a wish list, which is great, except is there, are, at some point, is there a rank order for how these happen? You know, what are the, where's the prioritization of the priorities? And so, let me, I'm naive to the process of that, so let me know, you know, when that happens and kind of how we determine that, if you don't mind. The other thing is just clarifying the process when we look at, you know, Clifton specifically. When we talk about scoping, when we talk about, could, do you mind just giving a follow-up of like, what does that process look like for, for the folks in that boundary to have some sense of, of how that process works? What timeline, what, what the timeline is like, and how do we make those determinations? I sure would appreciate follow-up on that.
So, as far as the timeline goes for the feasibility, is that what you're asking for, like the Clifton Area Elementary Schools that we have listed in the feasibility? So, this is something that we're working on as far as the staff workload, the process. So, we would look at all the area, all the elementary schools in the Clifton area. We will look at the future projection set, and what the need is, the capacity, the student enrollment projections, et cetera. And we would bring forth like recommendations, but at the same time, it sounds like, as Mr. Plattenberg had identified, that's not the only thing we would be looking at for the Clifton Elementary School. So, there's a feasibility study of whether there would be a boundary change if Clifton were to open, and there would also be a study about what could potentially happen if Clifton Elementary School site were something other.
In terms of prioritizing it, staff's prioritization would be really taking a look at the first and foremost, from a technical standpoint, where are the capacity issues? So, for example, on those pages that I referenced before, the elementary, middle, and high, the summary pages that talk about percent over capacity, those would be the higher priorities from staff's perspective. Does that help?
That does. Thank you, because I think Stella and I jointly share a concern when we look, and, you know, our concern was just visually seeing Centerville at the bottom of the page, and we look at sort of countywide, that, you know, what we feel like in terms of everything that's been done with Centerville, we've really maximized what we can do. And I understand that we're on the renovation queue, and that's great, and that gets us like 10 years away, right, from, from a new building, but what do we do in the interim? And I know that school is really feeling it and has tried to utilize everything. So, I think Stella and I jointly looked at that and just saw like, you know, some, some heart palpitations of Centerville being at the bottom. So, I, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
It's simply alphabetical order in that bottom by Magisterial District.
Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser.
Okay, so... Okay, so I would like to take, just take a minute, can I go back to this previous document? So two of the things that we chatted a little bit about, I think, at the work session, that I would like to see added to this list. One was, we talked about reinstating the Infrastructure Finance Task Force between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, so I don't know if that belongs on this list or if that would just be a notation in the CIP. We talked about maybe bringing that up with the, do we want it even noted in the CIP? We talked about bringing it up at our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors.
As a joint CIP working, we didn't say Infrastructure Finance, and I would suggest that, I can commit to you that that is on our agenda for the joint retreat.
Okay, great. And it would include discussion of the, the financing and the data analysis and data sharing.
Correct, but that's, it's not the, it's not called the Infrastructure Financing Worker Group, it is...
Okay, that was a previous group.
Joint Work on CIP, that's a group that's no longer in existence.
Okay, perfect.
And I apologize, Madam Chair, I shouldn't have jumped in, but that was one thing I knew how to answer.
That's okay.
Thank you.
That's good clarification. The other thing we talked about was having a, another list, something like this one. Again, we'd have to maybe chat about prioritization and what that list looks like, but that was a list of situations to watch around potential capacity enhancements. I'm thinking McLean High School, of course. You know, having something that, I know if you look on page 99, it lists McLean High School, and it lists the fact that, I think it's F, you know, that they, we were potentially looking at capacity enhancements, but I just wanted something a little bit bolder than that to really acknowledge, you know, what we're looking at in the, you know, Tyson's, McLean area and other areas like, you know, Chantilly, around, you know, increased population and capacity in our schools.
One of the things, and I recall the, the language, I think, that we had on, it was number, what was the number on that one?
228.
228, and the language on that was referred to as, consider adding key item list to CIP. And the key item list, the challenge with identifying that, and I totally understand, because when you have a list of Langley, McLean, and for example, it mentioned McLean, and then if you look on the back for McLean, it says A, B, H, whatever, it'll say boundary adjustment, it'll say potential addition in the future. We were trying to put our heads around how to have a prioritization page, like we have the draft here before you that we're going through now, page 40, and a prioritization page where it wouldn't be confusing about, you know, if there was a boundary adjustment that was requested, then I would want to make sure that we were clear that we were moving towards the direction of the boundary adjustment, and that even though we had a potential for addition, that on that other page, there wasn't be that same confusion that I think Ms. McLaughlin pointed out by the way we even did it here this evening. So I'm trying to figure out how to do that, to provide, to accommodate, and I don't really know how, because when you look at all of the different schools in the CIP, there's so many that have potential boundary adjustments. Perhaps we could go ahead and put, and I just thought of this, actually, we could put, whichever ones we have a boundary adjustment, that we could have the reference page link and the A through H that was recommended as a part of the initial CIP, or something that would allow you to see the full depth and breadth, even though our focus is on a boundary adjustment. Does that make any sense?
And I think it might be around ensuring that communities understand that there are options, and so as we're going out and doing those scoping meetings with communities, we want them to understand that we're not going to go in any one direction, but that we can have a conversation about a variety of options. So to have a page or to have something where we pull out schools that could be considered for capacity enhancements, it might drive a community in a particular direction versus, let's talk about all of the options, and we can certainly talk about capacity enhancements as being one of those options. But I think what I hear Mr. Plattenberg saying is that we would want to make sure that we keep our full spate of options open and available for the community to understand, and it also puts a little more, a little more pressure on staff to think about other things in addition to those capacity enhancements, and I'm thinking programmatic changes or other things that we could do to, to help support a community. So we could certainly direct people to some of those options while at the same time helping people understand that we want to make sure that you have as many options as possible when we have a scoping meeting with the community. And I don't know if that helps or...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's an either/or, I don't think people are looking at it as you're going to do this or you're going to do that. I think in a number of situations, we're going to have to do multiple things. So I think, you know, just making sure we're aware of those situations where we really have, you know, problems, and we're going to need to look at multiple options.
And that might be a way for us to have that better conversation where we talk about, you know, multiple options. I think some people do look at it as, oh, you can choose one thing from seven options. Well, we may choose three or four items out of this option list to help address capacity at a school. So there may be some opportunities for us to spell that out a little more clearly in the CIP, so that people understand that it's not just, you know, one option from a list.
Yep, you know, Mr. Smith, I'm just looking at the note beneath that chart there, the chart, if we can just scroll down a little bit more. It says, "The recommended boundary adjustment options and program changes are included in CIP for future consideration only. Any option chosen will be discussed and decided through a transparent process, engages community in accordance with the regs." You might be able to put languages, the boundary potential adjustments are one of many options that the board may be considering, and just be explicit in that note to say that one of many, see page blank for the list of all. But we are saying that boundaries is one of the tools that we're going to look at, and our community needs to be aware that that is a tool we're looking at and that they're going to be engaged in the process. So I think maybe just lengthening that in the note can help.
And there may be an opportunity to just add those options here on this page instead of directing them to another...
Right, yeah, because it's less of a focus just on boundaries, more on capacity enhancement, being something we really want to look at.
And that's an excellent point, because, you know, some of the feedback that we received in the public meetings was, you know, not just to focus on one thing. So I mean, your representation of that feedback is spot on with what we were trying to think and how to do that. And I know when we go through a boundary process, the boundary process informs that recommendation that will be forthcoming from staff about what the preponderance of the feedback came. And I know we have a meeting coming up with staff before we're going to be able to come back to you on, on specifically what that, what that public input process provided. And maybe that will help make it be more of a, in addition to what Dr. Braybrand said, so, but yeah, I mean, I get it.
All right.
Thank you. Ms. Seismarheiser, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you very much. A couple of questions. I would have loved to see, or maybe in the conversations today, some thoughts, you know, when we asked for sort of staff recommendations on what you all would recommend as a starting point for this page, what the thought process was about why some of these were chosen versus some of the other ones? As I look at some of the, sort of, I look at, you know, your charts, you know, for example, Region 1 Possible Solutions, there are several schools where possible boundary adjustments is listed as one of the possible solutions, and every region has several schools identified where possible boundary adjustments is a possible solution to look at. So, and, I mean, I'll just throw out Mantua as one example, and I recognize I'm not a Magisterial member, so I'm not, but, which is, according to the charts, 124% of capacity, but it's not listed here. But on the Possible Solutions, boundaries was one of the possible solutions. So just as, to get an understanding of how were these chosen as their priorities versus some of the other ones that were listed here in the thought process, would be the first question, and two and three would be, were getting, reducing the amount of split feeder situations considered when we're looking at some of these sort of boundary adjustments? I know I've heard from a lot of the community members of their concerns about split feeder schools and in addressing that, Rolling Valley is one I've heard a lot about, but several schools across the county. And the third, which was your question on that chart that you said about the last one about special education programming and capacity, I think what that may have been going towards is some of our places have a specific special education sites or programs, such as CSS sites or enhanced autism sites, and what effect does that have both on taking kids out of their base schools and communities and also on capacity of the school where those sites are located? So that's a lot thrown at you, but so there were three different questions there.
Yeah, there were. Thank you for them. The first one, really, what, when you take a look at a school like Mantua, why didn't it include them? Mantua has a academic AAP program, a gifted program in it, that currently is a huge driver for it. We've looked at circulation, a number of different things there, the community public meetings that I've been a part of, there's a lot of concern and complaint about the traffic, but nobody wants to leave Mantua. So redistricting of that, and quite honestly, the Magisterial District member in the past has not brought that up, and that's generally the process that we kind of allowed. We're trying to be more transparent and have it be more organic and have the School Board members give this kind of feedback and let us know, just like Ms. Tolan did, about making sure we cover the broad spectrum of opportunities that I think Mr. Smith and Dr. Braybrand said about going into. So that's why a school like Mantua wouldn't be in there, for example. What would our rating be? My rating would be what I told you before, on those pages that have the highest capacity issues, when you look at the elementary and the middle and the high, those are the ones that I really look at in terms of my biggest need. Now, given that I did have a Wakefield Forest that was ongoing and a Langley, McLean, right now, the only other ones that I'm looking at from my perspective or staff's perspective is really the, looking at the Centerville issue and how to address when we look at that whole pyramid, because that's going to consume enough of staff's time. But that's just my myopic view, and I believe this conversation is more holistic to include some of the comments that we've received already.
If I could on this, because this is, that, that was just a nugget question, and we need to be, we just had a retreat, we're talking about building the relationship, and let's talk for a minute about the boundary process, because that's what you just asked. We've had traditionally a tip of the hat to Magisterial Districts to talk about that boundary process and their role. Not good, not bad, it's just what we've done. That always, in a way, because boundaries are, have been, at least in Fairfax, but in most districts, such a tough topic, that getting on this list, right, from a staff perspective is sometimes a hard thing to do. How many people, right, you're just newly elected, and please, put my community in the boundary process. We have a consultant coming to look at our whole policy around how we do it. When I got here, we had a 25-year-old policy that I feel was not transparent enough. And so we have that consultant, the board directed us, directed me to get the consultant, we're doing it, you'll have it this spring. So we have a chance with that consultant and with this new board to step in and say, what is the policy and what's the set of procedures that we want? We'll be guided by what a consultant's recommendations may be. But yes, from a staff perspective, we'd love to be able to lean in a little more to this whole board and say, here are what we see as the high, and of course, there's community engagement, there's the process of the pros and cons. But I do think in some ways, when the tip of the hat to the Magisterial has sometimes limited maybe the, because when it's one person, it's your area, are you jumping at the whatever when there may be other tools? So I think that's just one of the things we have to just put on the table as a little bit of an elephant in the room, own it a little, and think about when we hear from the boundary consultant, what is the best way for Fairfax moving forward to be transparent, build trust, but also deal with real capacity challenges that this system faces now and will face with continued growth? Even if it's slow growth with general ed, I shared with you already in the budget, special ed's growing at a raider, at a rate higher, we're going to still have program needs, you're going to hear from a consultant tonight about advanced academics. So there are a lot of layers and variables in play as we start to go through this, and you're really asking, all of the boards are asking great questions tonight, but that's a biggie.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Kies-Gamaro.
Boy, I'm glad I finished, I'm following Dr. Braybrand, because I was going to bring the whole topic of the boundary policy and what the consultant has been tasked to do, which is to come back to this board with best practices on how we should look at boundary policy, when is it appropriate to look at changing boundaries, when is it appropriate to identify, you know, what are our criteria, are they actually, if we believe in sustainability, should we be looking at shortening bus rides? Should be, we be looking at a number of different factors, including how many kids we put in schools? Next piece is that I think it's time for this board to take a fresh look at the size of our elementary schools. The fact that we have so many of our elementary schools that exceed 1,000 students, and it begs the question, can we satisfy the needs of those students effectively if we have schools that have, you know, 1,000 students in K through 2, 700 and, you know, or more in three additional grades? And so I would ask that we look at that. Additionally, just wanted to bring the attention of page 40, and that this really is a reflection, kind of a hybrid between the empty page 40 of two weeks ago and bringing in some of the discussions of page 46 from last year, and I think that it warrants a discussion as to what should be on this page and what shouldn't be, and what's actually feasible in the short term. And then once again, referencing that we will be looking at our renovation queue, and every time that we look at a capacity enhancement, we are actually delaying the renovation queue for others because we're, we're pulling money into it. And so I just want to make sure that when we make decisions, that we have the conversation around the table of, if we decide to move forward on, you know, on something, what is the impact on the others in the queue? And we all understand it.
Thank you. Ms. Kies-Gamaro, followed by Ms. Pokarski.
Thank you. I am happy to follow Ms. Corbett Sanders, because I've, I've kind of been trying to understand how we got where we are, but also what the community might be understanding when they see some of the changes, right? If you looked at the previous CIP, you would have saw page 46, you would have known it was voted for, then you opened up the new CIP and you found a blank page 40, and then if you looked at what was posted, we have a new proposal. And I have to say, as one board member, I don't understand the rationale behind what's on this list and what happened with 46 and, and all of that. I'm not saying that to be critical, but Dr. Braybrand knows that one of the drums that I like to beat has to do with how we communicate with the community. And if they don't understand our process, I think that it, it lends itself to criticism and accusations of lack of transparency and a number of other negative things that many of us had to endure in this last election. And sometimes that criticism may have been warranted just by the fact that it's difficult to understand how we got where we are. So that's my first comment, and I would like to, I don't know how we get there. I mean, at this point, we have this draft page, and I think we asked staff to give us information and what they would recommend, but I would like to know the rationale behind how we got here. I think the folks that were on page 46 are going to wonder, know how they lost their place, right? I mean, there is, there are a number of factors. I'm not adding value here to any of these decisions, but I am concerned about how the, if, if we are a fishbowl and the, and the public is looking in, whether they can understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I'm not sure that we've given them the, enough information to be able to understand that. So one thing that I think that I would like to propose, and I don't know if this would work, the totally hypothetically speaking, for consideration by this board and staff, whether this is feasible or not, but I know, and, and I think this perhaps is what you were trying to get to by having that other page, right? If we could have some sort of rating system, perhaps there, it is, you know, maybe it's we have what we consider a good size, what is the best practices for the size of an elementary school? So size might be a consideration. It might be that we're over capacity. It might be that there are infrastructure issues that we have to deal with, and those are impacted by the number of students. It could be a number of things. It could be traffic, it could be whatever those considerations are, because I think when, when somebody in the public looks at what we have in our CIP and they see A through H, anything could happen, and there haven't been any real discussions as to how we got where we are, and then the next thing they know, I'm up for a boundary change, and they don't know how we got there. So I think perhaps we want to take a few steps back, and as we begin to think about how we want to go steps back, and as we begin to think about how we want to go forward in a different way, we can talk about what some of those steps should look like so that the public can truly understand what we're doing. We talked about this in our two-by-two a little bit, and I'd like to throw that out there as a possible discussion and reserve my last 22. So did you have a response?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll stop you there. No, but thank you so much. Because what you speak of, Ms. Keys-Gomara, is exactly the blending between the school board policy conversation. In this CIP, it references all of those priority recommendations that were identified by previous boards. And that included proximity, split feeders. It included all of the elements that you were mentioning. So the policy point that Dr. Braybrand talked about, hopefully will inform further, you know, our processes, right? So the overarching process. To get to how we got to page 40 as it is, and as you mentioned, page 46, it was transparent in the conversation that was held at the last work session, that we didn't have anything on page 40. And there was a desire to bring back the items that were on the previous page 46. So what we did was, as staff, and this is the blend of the staff recommendation, staff brought in the majority of the items on page 46, right? It's not identical. And staff brought in what we gleaned from the work session conversation for further dialogue today. Now, that is kluge when you look at the blurring of the policy that is underway, as was mentioned by Ms. Corbett Sanders and Dr. Braybrand, and our work session here, to your point about taking a step back before we move forward. But in looking at what we are identifying on this page and the magisterial districts, it touches on some of the points that are, that are mentioned, which would be Shrevewood, the potential for the repurposing of Dunlory. That touches on Shrevewood. The further conversation, McLean-Langley, also. So in other words, you kind of dialed me up, because you covered soup to nuts, the whole thing that, that is the, the process, the policy, and the work. And it's gotten, you wanted to say something, weren't you?
You can go ahead and finish.
No, I've talked too much, but I like, you should dial me up. It's like church, I'm motivated. But, you know, that's how we got to where we are.
I don't remember your time, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would only say that the conversations that staff have had with the board members in the two-by-twos have been invaluable for us as we think about page 40 as well, because some of those things that have been discussed around the table, around the CIP, are also showing up on page 40 as well. So it was taking items that were on the old page 46, bringing those in based on conversations in those two-by-twos, based on conversations from the last work session, and then bringing those items for consideration for us to think about how we move forward, and which potential scoping dates would we possibly want to adjust? What items, if any, are sort of in Table 8 that we would want to consider and think about moving based on input from your communities, having them here on this page and seeing what kind of input you could add to that process? So this is really about having information to support and facilitate a conversation.
Ms. Pok, sorry. I got you. Ms. Pokarsky, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Ms. Keys-Gomara covered a little bit of what I wanted to ask, and it sounds like this is going to be a process with the boundary policy. But something I did not see here is Chantilly High School. When we talk about the utilization chart, it's at, it's on the list. That entire western part of the county, what are we going to do there? I think it warrants a conversation of, you know, whether it's on this future consideration list, which I think it should be, in addition to Centerville High School. Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, at this point, I think we can add it. So the purpose of this is just a list of things that we've captured to be modified today during the working session. So adding Centerville, or rather, Chantilly in addition to Centerville is not a concern. This is the school board's list. We did, took a shot at it. Today, we're to modify it as necessary.
I guess my question was, why wasn't it on the list to begin with? Was there, is there something I'm missing?
I'm sure we've missed one or two.
Okay, fair enough.
Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Darinat Kofax.
Okay, thank you. I really want to say, want to say that I appreciate the comments that both Dr. Braybrand and Ms. Karen Ke, not Karen Keys-Gomara, Ms. Corbett Sanders shared regarding some of the hard conversations that need to be had when we prioritize enhancements, because it does take away from the opportunity to really speed up that renovation queue. And I am assuming, and this is more of a question rather than just a statement, after the information is provided by the consultant who's going to be providing some recommendations regarding boundaries, the decisions to have those schools be looked at for boundaries will still be up to this body. So that hard conversation still remains, whether it's on the list today, whether it's on the list tomorrow, it will still fall to us to make sure that it gets on that list. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. Having said that, I want to also express a concern that I have that was also shared earlier, the size of elementary schools. It's important for us to have that conversation, because I think it serves as a framework for moving forward with options A through H. Because if we have decided that X is the optimal size, it really will make it difficult to perhaps consider some options that have been presented in the CIP. So I'd like to make sure we have that conversation sooner rather than later, because I will need for that to guide my thinking around the recommendations that I, that are available. Because if we're saying it's 500, it will take some things off of the table regarding options. And my question to the group, we've got a pretty hefty list there. What is our next step for Table 7 and for Table 8? So Table 7 has, what, five, six schools? I understand the priorities that Mr. Plattenberg shared will be highlighted by staff. Once that is done, walk me through what the sequence of action will be. And then the same thing for Table 8.
So for the list of feasibility studies?
Let's talk about Table 7.
Table 7. So that, that would be, the board would identify which are the priorities for staff. So there's a scoping meeting. The board would have to approve a scope for each of these. So we will prepare a scope when the board members initiate the boundary scoping to start. That's how it's been happening.
And is that done here? I'm sorry, I?
Yes, we've had work sessions to discuss what the scope of the boundary study would be. Those, the last one we had was May 2019, to discuss the scope of Glen Forest Elementary School study, and I think we were talking about the Woodson Area Elementary Schools at the same time, establish a scope for us to go forward and have community meetings.
And then for Table 8?
So if I may just expand on Table 7. So it really comes down to, you know, the process of what would be your priorities, that kind of conversation, the development of that, where the preponderance of the issues for this body after hearing the conversation and the discussion would be then, okay, we're going to prioritize these as our individual ones. Now, the process then after that, in terms of the scoping, is exactly what Ms. Gill has mentioned. It's been done at a work session, in fact, after the McLean-Langley discussion, not only was there amendment made to go ahead and have that added to the CIP, but then the scope was determined in a work session with concurrence by the body that that scope would include just those two high schools. So that was why the direction went out. Now, the process unfolds to inform what the community may want, which may go outside of that realm, which.
Jeff, can I take, can I channel where I think your questioning is? Jeff, between now and the 6, we put in new dates for the scope and potential boundary anticipated date, correct? That was an earlier question from Ms. McLaughlin. We would revise the dates. Right now, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 on Table 7. Does staff have capacity to do all of those for the next year? Or would those dates be over a two-year period? What is staff's capacity just for those existing 6? That's, that's, I think, a little bit of what she's getting at. Can it all be done next year?
No, we don't anticipate all of it to be done next year.
Okay.
For the following school year.
Right. So you'll be able to, you'll have dates, some that would be, you'd change the dates, some that would be effective, maybe, maybe as early as next year, maybe, maybe not, some the year after, and some the year after that. That's just for that 6.
And we're also hearing that some of the schools that are here on Table 7 wouldn't be schools that we would consider for this year. So we've heard that, so that does free up opportunities for us to look at items that are on Table 8 and think about our capacity to.
Right. Right. So I think one of the things to help board members, or we need to help the board know, what's the total amount of capacity we can do each year before they load up Table 7 unrealistically with the load of what we can do? What's the expectation of the load factor for Table 7? And I'm going to share one other thing, just being elephant in the room, and this is a brand-new board and early. The board ultimately has complete authority over boundary policy and what the ultimate procedures will be. But my, just saying, just an observation, we have a lot of board involvement upfront at the beginning versus after the community, after staff recommendations, community involvement, and the board at the end. And there's pros and cons to that being at the very beginning, right? And as I said, it's also been a tip of the hat to the magisterial. So the board, the boundary, I would say, and we, this could be a discussion, the boundary tool, among all the tools we've had, has been used less than other tools in Fairfax County. We've done additions, we've done renovations, we've done trailers, like, we've done that, those tools, a lot. We've done boundaries just a little. So part of what the board has to wrestle with, as you talk about size of an elementary school, yes, but let's be honest, if you talk about that size going down, you're going to have to use all of those A through G tools, and it's the potential that boundary tool would have to come up too. So that's just part of that frank, transparent conversation as we keep moving forward. And I think for the board to think about, where is the power of the involvement? Do you want it a lot on Table 7? Do you want it at the end? Do you want it when you have the scoping? Because right now, we have a process, after you do this, then we go, well, what ones do you want to look at? And you vote on that as a group. And so that's another meeting. So again, that won't really come until we have that boundary consultant, but I think that is one of the conversational factors. Where does the board want to insert, and is it multiple points, at the beginning, middle, and end? Is it at the end only? Is it at the beginning? And what does that look like? And that's what we're, I think in the end, what Ms. Keys-Gomara said, we did the blank sheet, trying to say, hey, here we are, we're not trying to take anything for granted with this new board. That may not have been the best strategy. And then we really brought back the old, like you said at the last meeting, hey, everything on here really still stands from the prior one. Yes, we started to have some two-by-twos, which was making some things, and even tonight, some things that may come off, some that may come on. We're using the old structure, right, right now as we consider where we may want to go after we hear a boundary consultant in another month or two. Does that make sense? But we have the CIP because of the tyranny of the calendar now to vote on. So that's a little bit of where I think we're just trying to move it through.
And I think, I'm so sorry, I'm still trying to get an answer to my question, and I have 49 seconds left. You guys are cheating me out of time. The Table 8? I don't think I got the answer to Table 8 in terms of what, we have a pretty heavy list on that table, what happens now with this group.
Okay, so what happens with Table 8 is, through the conversation, we help inform what we might feel is appropriate for Table 8 and what is for Table 7. For example, we didn't eliminate anything from page 46 of the previous CIP, but we did move Fairfax-Ockton Elementary down to the Table 8 portion. By doing that, now, you know, people said staff's recommendation. Well, we did some of it, but we tried to find the balance of the feedback and then doing what we felt. We are working that with individual board members in the magisterial district, representative of the board of supervisors, for expanding the scoping area, if you will, not the scoping area, but the search area, based upon information that they said that they may have that we might not, to help inform and assist this school board. So we didn't, without that feedback and direction, we're not really in a position to move forward right now. So that's why we moved it to 8. So the ones on 8, you know, by listing them down there, and then I mentioned, the highest priority for me are the ones with the highest capacity issue. That's, I'm kind of stuck. That's kind of where, where we are with this page. Did that help with Table 8 at all?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I will hopefully build some more understanding around this, because I do know we cannot continue to trailer our way around our issues. That is not optimum. We can't continue to add additions either. That is not optimum. We do have, with finite resources, we do have to be prudent and to use to their full capacity all of our buildings. So that conversation of boundary is really going to be an important one to have, because we could only add so much to these buildings before it becomes, you know, high school-sized elementary school.
And Dr. Anderson, one, one point I do want to make is, the policy that was referenced about the size of the facility, because that's where my mind went when you had asked that as a, as a part of your multipart question. No, it's fine. That's Policy 8120.2, and the preferred maximum size, absent any extraordinary circumstance for new school buildings, are approximately 950 student program capacity for elementary, 1,350 program capacity for middle, grade 7 through 8, and 2,500 student program capacity for high school. Now, that, that is current. So that, and that was revised, thank you, in 2013. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Darinat Kofax.
Thank you. And to my colleagues, I am sharing your frustration at the process, but I don't think anyone is, is guilty of not doing the proper thing. I think the boundary policy, because what you said, Ricky, was that, and we as a board have heard from the community, you can't trailer your way out of it. The boundary process is going to be very difficult, should we walk down that road, but capacity issues continue to exist. So I'm hopeful that once we have the recommendations from the consultant, what optimum boundary policy looks like, that will lead us then to a process that will then allow us to come as a board. As Dr. Braybrand referenced, it is this board's responsibility and right to decide all of the things that you are asking. We had extensive conversations when I was first on the board about optimum size of elementary school, middle school, and high school. It was many, many work sessions, and it was difficult to come to agreement, but we did. Is it time to look at that again? I think so. So all of these things, and it is, we're at a funny junction right now, because we have to approve this based upon the process of our funding body. And so we are at a point where several of us are a little frustrated, like, and I think it's going to be up to Karen and I and Dr. Braybrand and Jeff and his team to figure out what, after, after, I think the first thing we need to do is really wait for the consultant's report, and then decide, what kind of work sessions do we want as a, as a body? What do we want to look at? How do we want to look at then based upon their recommendations and what the process shall be? So I'm not going to take my time to talk about, I do want to mention just basically my school that I'm, that we're looking at, because obviously, a new school in the middle of a crowded area, it's a rolling boundary adjustment that's going to happen there. Plus, Karen speaks to it often, but didn't mention it tonight, Richmond and Bark Highway. You know, we, that is going to add thousands of kids to schools that are already crowded and already have trailers, and that, our area is a little bit more condensed. So it'll be interesting to see how that's going to play out. We don't have a lot of green space the way some of the western parts of the county do. So that's where we are. And Dr. Braybrand, I guess my only question is, is tell us again when the boundary policy group is coming to us.
Mr. Smith, can you remind me, is it March, April? Do we know?
March.
Yeah, conferring. Yeah, conferring about it. Is it March or April?
Yeah, that's anticipated. We just met with the boundary consultant team that was selected last week, and only one person was able to come into the phone, so we're meeting with them again this week. We're actually meeting in person, they're a firm out of Florida, to just establish an updated timeline to be reviewed. So that, we're hoping that three to four months of the process. So that would put us about April.
Thank you.
All right. I will take a moment to share my, my own thoughts, and then we'll see where we go from there. I did want to comment, obviously, as people mentioned, a lot of frustrations, community concerns, confusion, and whatnot. I do look forward to seeing how we can move past potentially an old structure, or recommend different things with the boundary policy conversation that we end up having. I would love to see something like a transition process or consideration towards schools that do end up having this inevitable outcome. What is the process to ensure that folks are informed in a timely manner, and that the considerations surrounding students and their own well-being and the challenges of that transition are considered, whether that's things like grandfathering or whatnot, but having that conversation at some point. I wanted to just flag a couple things, looking at the follow-up points. Thank you, staff, for responding to our many questions. A couple that I think we might want to look at again, or make sure are on that list. The first was, I remember Ms. Kies-Gamara brought up last time, and several of us supported, looking into how this potentially impacts resegregation in the county. You know, I know that this is something we may discuss with the Board of Supervisors at a retreat, but I would love to ensure that that's a priority when we, when we consider some of this. And then the other piece was ensuring that we, hopefully in the new draft, include something that outlines, as we've all been kind of discussing throughout the evening here, the community engagement steps that we're looking towards, just to ensure that the community is well-aware. Whether that's the rationale for listing has been mentioned, whether that's, I know we have a broad timeline, but even specific opportunities for folks to engage, just really having it as a part of this physical document very explicitly, so anyone who's referring to this and has frustrations can find that there's opportu, there are opportunities, and that we look forward to hearing from them in that process, ensuring that it's a fair and transparent one. And then finally, for those schools that we do decide to take Option H for, or see it as our only option, I would, I think it would be beneficial for all of us to have specific delineation, and we talked about this potentially as a possible boundary policy to put in place, but a delineation of the steps that have been taken for that school, so that families are well, you know, we're talking with Klein-Langley, I would love to see a page, you know, to take it seriously enough, the impact on families. I mean, honestly, being on the ground, all of us can attest to conversations you have about kids who want recommendations, and parents who are going to be stressed out and don't know, you know, they have two kids going to different places, and just a lot of confusion on the ground. It would be helpful to show that due diligence has been done, and that we've tried everything possible, and now this is why H is on here. But literally, like, if I would, you know, if I was to design this, would include a physical page on each school that we're doing that for, just so that, that information's out there. But again, overall, thank you guys so much, and I look forward to that policy conversation.
Now, okay, meeting manager, oh no, you want to respond, go ahead.
If I could get a bit of clarification before we go to the next round, because earlier I heard Ms. McLaughlin talk about a couple of schools that she might like us to consider moving from Table 7 to Table 8. So to clarify that, we're looking at Little Run, and then the Oakview and Old Creek being moved from Table 7 to Table 8. So, that was a bit of a clarification. So, Dr. Anderson, to get to your point of how we're looking at these tables, that we can look at some of the items that we have here on Table 7 and think about where they fit. So, Ms. McLaughlin stating that she's had conversations with her community, she's had conversations with staff, so we'll be moving these items from Table 7 down to Table 8. And then, any of the, the items that are down below on Table 8, the board could certainly have conversations about, you know, the feasibility of moving them up for, for future consideration. The other piece, and I think that for some board members, some of the questions that I've gotten, it's what are we voting on? And really, when we think about this Page 40, you're, we're voting on, the board would be voting on giving us the go-ahead to move forward to reach out to the community. And, Ms. Hamesh, when you're talking about some of the things that we do with our individual school communities, after we go out and have those scoping meetings with our community, we come back to the board with all of the information that we've gathered from that scoping meeting. We then have that very in-depth conversation about the options that we might consider as staff, the options that you might consider as a board, and the options that the community considered. And then we have that in-depth conversation about what should happen for those individual schools. So, just kind of trying to put it into some perspective of what the board would actually be voting on with the CIP. It's giving us the go-ahead to go out and begin those conversations with the community, so that we can bring that information back to the board.
Thank you. And there's certainly no assumption that the due diligence hasn't been done, right? But communicating that very clearly, I think, is incredibly useful for us and for our communities.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly communicate that more clearly.
I think there's a need for a little bit more clarity. Mr. Smith, you're talking about those items in Table 7 that you would go out to the community on, not the items in Table 8.
You're clear, yes. We're only talking about those items on Table 7. The items on Table 8 are areas identified for future consideration. It would really be those items on Table 7. And so again, based on the clarity that I've just gotten from Ms. McLaughlin, we will be moving those last two items down to Table 8.
So, based on that, I'm going to make a suggestion, because I think Dr. Anderson mentioned that we needed clarity on, on how much you could handle in a given year before we review another CIP. So there may be two additional items there, or do you think that the capacity for your organization really is reflected in the existing Table 7? And then in looking at Table 8, my concern with this laundry list on Table 8 is that it sends out a message to the community that we may not want to send, that we're going to go and do all of these things right away. And I would suggest that we need to either shorten up Table 8, or possibly even delete Table 8, and reference that boundary feasibility for additional areas will be developed in context of the new boundary policy, or, you know, future discussions, but not having Table 8, that laundry list, because I think it sends some confusing messages to the greater community.
Yeah, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, that's an excellent point with the feedback we got, especially when we're talking about a school board policy. In general terms, for the edification, staff doesn't like more than four boundary adjustments. And each one has its own challenges. We've dealt with elementary ones, and the high school ones seem to be a lot more involved, as our initial discussions with Alengley-McLean, a seemingly innocuous one, brought up a whole lot of, of energy around it, for example. So, so just for clarification, staff usually prefers four. The fact that we have seven, Table 7, as Dr. Anderson referred it to, excellent, though, it makes it simple. That is enough capacity for staff, given that the school board is looking at this policy in the timeline of what this policy is coming, that may inform our entire process. And that's why I feel uncomfortable in the position I am to present recommended moving forward, other than what we can lean out of these conversations. And, I will tell you, as a part, I think, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, you had talked to this before, as a part of the recommendation for the consultant, there was a heavy piece about communication. So, to cover some of the concerns that you had mentioned. So, I just provide that for just a response to the, the last comments. Thank you, Hamesh.
Thank you.
So do we need Table 8, or are we holding off? I mean, I guess the question is, Table 8, is it sending a false message to the community?
I mean, in fairness to staff, we requested this last time. This was a- Right. But we wanted, there was, we raised the idea that we wanted to know what's on our mind, looking ahead, right? That was something we discussed, so. I mean, I don't know if we decided to change our mind, but that's, I just wanted to credit, credit staff on that. Okay. So I want to point out a couple things as to where we are right now. Yeah, we're, I know, we're only going to do one go-back per person. It's 6:20, and we have two topics to cover by 7:00 PM with follow-up, so clearly, we're not going to be on time here if we're trying to get this done. I just wanted to flag that for everyone. So please, one go-back each person. I'm also going to step away in a second, because I need to catch a prayer as soon as Tammy comes back, and we'll continue. Okay, so, Ms. McLaughlin.
I'm, just a point of clarification before you start the clock. It was my understanding that we were not going to be doing the renewable energy, because we were going to have all, well, I mean, given everything that's on our plates, I don't understand why we're going to jam through something that's important, but that's, I'm just going to say, my- No, I understand. I'm just concerned that, I don't want to short-change anything. The renewable energy is good news. It's just, we may then have to tack on more time, because I don't want that one to be short-changed either. That's, that's all.
And perhaps, if we want to postpone a topic, is that-
I'm not saying we postpone. What I said is, we may need to think about adding another opportunity to speak to it, like Part B. Just, I'm wanting people to think about that. We shouldn't short-change work sessions, and you're doing a great job wrapping your arms around this one, so.
I was going to say, perhaps for follow-up, if we want to combine follow-up from both, even though that's not ideal, folks, make sure you write down what you have in mind. Maybe that way, we can be more efficient. Okay?
Thank you. So, go ahead. So, I guess the only, what, part of the reason I wanted to go back, and Mr. Smith, I appreciate you bringing up two of my projects, but, Mr. Plattenberg, I would say, the third on the list, in Table 7, for Wakefield Forest Elementary, I recall hearing from you that there's the possibility that the renovation scoping, on whether it could be renovated at large enough that you wouldn't have to do a boundary study at all. I'm just trying to determine, again, in the interest of board members who have projects that are more pressing, would the Wakefield Forest Elementary also be moved down to Table 8? Because, to my knowledge, it's not going to be one of the, the question of a boundary study for Wakefield Forest Elementary is still in flux, because we were doing the renovation assessment first. So, in the interest of the community not being concerned, can you speak to whether or not that should be moved to Table 8?
Yeah, it, it could be, certainly because of what you just spoke of. I mean, we're doing the renovation of that facility. When we do go in and do a renovation, generally we accommodate for the size, and I believe in Ms. Corbett-Sanders, some of the schools down in the, in the Mount Vernon area, we had done that identical process, where we go in, we accommodate the size, and we add a little bit, just in case there's a little growth. Usually one to two classrooms. That's our standard. So definitely, we could move it down. We left it up there, because it was an area of focus of yours, and I know that you've had community meetings. The Regional Assistant Superintendent had given us that feedback, and so we were trying to make sure it was still current. But certainly, we can move it down, knowing full well that we've taken a look at the size of the facility. I just didn't want to presume anything moving forward.
Thank you. The other thing is that I would say, I would like to keep Table 8. I, I think it is important that it will demonstrate to the public that the board is mindful that we have hotspots around the county. And so, and it also helps us also keep track of our conversations with one another. So I'm in favor of Table 8 remaining. And then I just wanted to comment that, for eight years as a board member, I have expressed concern about our elementary school sizes, about what is research and best practice for the size versus what Fairfax County's been doing. And Mr. Plattenberg's predecessor, if I recall, was very keen on just build these very large mega elementary schools. So for my colleagues, again, in terms of history, it's something that Dr. Braybrand, I hope you will bring back to the conversation, on how did we get here to having all these mega elementary schools, and what do we want to do going forward? Because you're going to hear me again and again, keep saying, bring me the research, and the best practice, and the data, and then we'll have a conversation. But I don't want to do things just because. The other thing is, I will just say, Mr. Plattenberg, and I would like for you to comment on, the push-pull that we have as a school division on the large elementary schools is land. We just simply don't have available land, we don't have the money. So when you have a problem of land and a problem of money, element, large elementary schools also became a piece of it. So, I also want everybody to know that it might have been with consternation, that we grew some of these to be larger. So, if you could just speak to that, as you best understand, because I know a lot of it happened prior to your arrival, but even just understanding, is that, did I capture that correctly, that land and money is a big piece of driving larger elementary schools?
Absolutely, Ms. McLaughlin, in addition to the location of where the growth is occurring. So, when we were growing district at 3,000 students a year, the cost of land being cost prohibitive, as we've discovered in our most recent conversations, and that always being the case, and the inability to obtain land in areas, it is, those three elements have been really catastrophic. You, you nailed it. And that is the reason, by the way, the revision to the board policy was through work session discussion that had that angst that you described, about what is the appropriate size. The best practices were discussed, about what size was recommended based upon instructional modalities and methodology, administering, and so forth. There were a number of factors, but we ended up there as, as well.
Thank you. I have Ms. Tolan followed by Ms. Cullen.
I, most of my questions have been answered, but I just want to clarify a couple things. One, with the McLean-Langley boundary study, for example, you mentioned, you know, you can handle about four boundary studies. A number of the comments that we've been getting have been that, if you're going to change, you know, a high school boundary, so now you're changing, you know, the, the pyramids, you really need to reach down to the middle schools as well. So, I just want to make sure, from a staff viewpoint, if we determine, based on input from the community, that we also need to look at the, where the kids are going to middle school, that we can handle that.
We can, as, this is part of an ongoing, existing boundary study.
Got it.
That's the reason why we say four, because sometimes they evolve.
Things happen. Things happen. Okay. And the dates may change depending upon community input as well. Just to clarify, on Table 8-
Ms. Tolan, can I just help with that question, and Jeff, your answer? Jeff, if in the McLean-Langley boundary study, there's a recommendation by staff to make an adjustment for middle school, given the concern, right, that some of it may need a tweak, does that need to be represented in Table 7 now? Or does it come back after there's community engagement from the high school piece, that, oh, hey, there's the middle school, and we need to take it? Just what's been the history of that?
As Mr. Smith mentioned, we will be coming forward with that information that was provided, that we've assembled.
Okay.
We do have to bring that through our process. But I, but I will tell you, it isn't generally staff's recommendation, it's the reflection of the community feedback to change a board-approved boundary adjustment. I, once the board approves something, that's the direction I-
Yes, sir.
No, so changes would be based on that community input. We would bring that back as part of the board discussion, and then that might change a lot of different things. But that was, is generally from, direction from the community.
So it doesn't-
Does that help you with your question?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure we didn't necessarily need to reflect that-
Okay.
-you were asking, that it's kind of incorporated. And then, for example, under Table 8, you know, just looking at the Drainsoil one, for example, you've got Silverline Elementary School. We're not even talking about planning for the Silverline Elementary School until 2021. So it's still encompassed within this 2021-25 CIP. But it would, like a lot of these, incorporate a number of elementary schools, most likely. So we just would, we're just, I'm just clarifying, we're just leaving this as fairly general.
And that's a perfect example, because the Silverline, when the practice had been in the past, that when the school was about to open, is when we did the scoping and all of that. This board policy may have different elements in it. This board policy may have different elements in it that may change that. But yes, historically, that's exactly how we do it. We go ahead and put it in there, so people know transparently, hey, heads up, something's coming. You know, it's going to be happening. Do we know all of the schools that would be impacted? No, not yet. I mean, it's premature for us to say that. But yeah, that's why it's included. Correct.
Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Seizmoreheiser.
I just wanted to flag a couple, too, in terms of this list. You know, one question for me is, like, how does Glen Forest make it into Table 7 when it's well under Orange Hunt's capacity situation? So I just, again, like, you know, I'm, I'm not sure the, the push and pull of, we definitely want you guys to use your expertise on prioritizing, you know, because I think you see the capacity in a different way than, than we do. So I, I can't speak for my other colleagues, other than to say, you know, I feel like our job as board members is to say, hey, here's boots on the ground, here's what it feels like in these schools, here's what community members are saying. But then, something like Union Mill is only at 91%, but it's on our list. Union Mill is one of those schools that's a massive school, but it is not overcapacity. And so in the terms, in terms of, I'm just looking at this list, and like, how can we make this narrower for you? Like, I think Union Mill then is not on it, because it's another, it meets Ricky's conversation of a school that is awfully big, but is not overcapacity. You know, I look at Irving Middle School, and I don't want to speak for Ms. McLaughlin, but for me, same thing. Yes, it's a little bit overcapacity. That principal is doing amazing things to utilize that space. I don't see that as a pressing issue in the world of pressing issues. When we look at Fairview, yes, that's a big one that we need to look at, but I, again, won't speak for Ms. McLaughlin, but I feel like that's tied up in the idea of looking at all the Clifton area elementary schools, and how capacity has been, being driven to those. So I would just say, I think there's a few that you can pull off in terms of Region 4, that are not, I don't want those to be looked at at the expense of something like Orange Hunt, where you have a principal who has been doing everything, where, Jeff, you've come in, and you have given guidance on how to use every square inch of Orange Hunt, and we're using, you know, a quad, and we're using all of this. Like, Orange Hunt is one of those schools where I feel like we have this constant problem, and we have done nearly, I think, everything that we can be doing. So that's an example where, as we were talking about the idea of listing out, like, what has been done, I feel like, maybe that's the motivation for moving things up, is that, gosh, we've looked at these schools, and we really are, we're at a point where we say, we don't know how else to, to, to utilize capacity in this building, so let's start a community conversation about what that looks like. And I guess that's all we're kind of saying, is like, there is prioritization of what are the different possibilities that can be done, but also, maybe what moves things up to Table 7, is that we have done everything we know to do. So how do we start those conversations about how to make this school manageable for staff and students?
Thank you.
Okay, well, you know, I'll say, like, which part? The one thing I will respond to, I mean, they're all excellent points, of course. When you look at the listing of all the other schools, if we make an adjustment to Orange Hunt, the feeder schools, and that's why there are a number of those that we included, because we know the situation is, is pretty daunting, to say the least. I know there was, there was, in the recommendations, there was something about the program, but no matter what, it looks like, you know, the school has an overcrowding issue. But I don't know what else to really address on that. That is one that, if it's desired to move it up for a boundary adjustment, we certainly could go ahead and look at doing that.
And I would just want to add that, we're in this unique transition period, waiting for a new policy. So I, what I'm hearing around the table are so many very good points, that I, that I know will be part of the boundary policy conversation, that we will be able to add to future CIPs, and to future policy around how the board makes decisions around schools on either of these lists, if we have these type of lists. So, so I'm hearing that, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll get to a point. And I think that where we are now is, that we provide as much information as we can, so that the board can make thoughtful decisions around the information that we have before us, and then know that, once we get a new policy in place, that we can certainly then work with our ass and board members, to work with communities, if we have to make adjustments based on any recommendations that come out of that new policy. So we are in that sort of, again, interesting space of adhering to current policy with current rules, knowing that something is coming down the pike.
Ms. Seizmoreheiser, followed by Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Thank you very much. I, I think you captured it well, that there's a difficulty going on here with being a new board, so not necessarily knowing all of the reasons, and being privy to all the conversations in terms of what, how this list was created initially. And that was what my initial question was going towards, is, you know, were, what, to what level were program placements, split feeder schools, all of these factors taken into account, when you're looking at what makes a priority list? Or was it based mostly on what Ms. Cohen said, in terms of the capacity issues, and we've, we've tried other solutions, and so this is really, or is it based on community input, in terms of the community really feels the need? Or is it all of it? So that's the one piece, is, you know, to really still do hear from your staff expertise, is, with all of these schools, how do these make the list as first priority to look at? And the other question really is, is, and to your point about talking about, we're in this tough situation of trying to make some decisions now, but knowing there's policy discussions coming down the pike, how do we communicate to our community that we do hear them, that we understand there are schools and areas that are facing capacity needs, but we need to figure out how to have the more robust discussions? And how do we capture that here? So part of, when I asked earlier about the level of, how much were split feeder schools looked at, or the question about special education program capacity, to me, it makes it difficult to have a conversation that is going to be coming up about boundary policy, without knowing how much all of those factors influence that percentage boundary, or capacity numbers now. And that's where I'm looking for a little more input, maybe not in the CIP, but in some way, shape, or form, before we go into those policy discussions, of what factors drove this list, and what factors are captured in here that really reflects the capacity problems.
Excellent point. And thank you for that clarification, because really, Dr. Brabran addressed how they got on the list. And I'll just set that aside and compartmentalize that. How much were these factors, special education, program, proximity? How much were they? Well, that's what previous boards struggled with. And there were talks of weighting those, giving them a prioritization factor. And they came up with, well, they're all really important, because nobody wanted to identify, I think Dr. Brabran wants, I, no, that's the nugget. Take that and freeze, and then we had a media sensation and a community that we're moving boundaries, we're changing everything. We spent a year and a half discussing the boundary policy, and then because of misinformation, upended all that work, and now you're having to sit with a new CIP with an old policy structure. We're two or three months out from a consultant. That's, that's the elephant in the room. We hadn't made any boundary decisions. We were talking about, what's the best policy? We had an A-through-Z policy, every factor's important, so no factor's important. Mr. Moon, who'd been on this board 25 years, said they push-pull, pulled teeth, they could never get consensus. I'm hopeful, after the consultant reports, this board will get consensus on what it wants its priorities to be, as we make recommendations. And maybe there's a dynamic that, you give us what your priorities are, and then staff brings the list, and then the whole board, this is just Scott talking, as superintendent, then the whole board really talks about. Because the magisterial lens, while I understand why it was traditionally that way, what happens in one magisterial district absolutely affects what happens in another, and what some board members who have returned, at large returning, what is my role in the boundary policy? Right? The prior policy had a clear tip of the hat to magisterial. So these are big things that need to ultimately get discussed, and will be in the spring, that can then drive what I think will be a whole, the CIP process for next year will be dramatically different from the CIP process this year. That's maybe the silver lining for tonight. The questions you're asking are all spot-on, but he's nailed it. Everything was a priority. But then, that's hard to explain, then, so what was the priority? And with, without a priority, the community reached its own view of what the priority was, or was not. And that is part of where I think, as we put an equity lens on this, what we come up with, what to do.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm just going to say, as we struggle with looking at what to do now, I want to sort of echo Ms. Kies-Gamara in saying, we need to be very mindful and thoughtful about how we communicate to the community about what we are doing now, what's, our processes going forward, what we're waiting for, in terms of looking, waiting for the consultant report. And I just want to be really, really mindful of how things look, whether it's, you know, previous dates, or our conversations, to know that we hear them, we see them, and we're looking, and making a holistic policy that's going to address concerns in a way that is equitable for everybody across the county. So I just want to leave us with that.
Ms. Kies-Gamara, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
So I'm, I'm happy to continue this conversation, and I would like to pose to my colleagues that we are in the midst of changing our culture with respect to how our community looks at boundaries. Ms. Laura Jane Cohen just said to me, so what do we do in the meantime? And I, I do think there's a lot that we can do, because we can be, I think, and I present this to you for consideration, we can be presenting what we think is important, especially about how we communicate to the community. Because what we just went through in this last election, really, and even the scoping meetings that I went to for the McLean-Langley boundary change, said to me that the community really has very little idea as to what is guiding our decisions. And so I think we can have real discussions about what we consider to be important, and we can have conversations with our community, and allow them to give us input. So that this is valuable time, while we are waiting to hear from the boundary expert, to say, this is what we've talked about as a board, and we are also intentionally engaging our community. I would like to point out, and I think, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I think it was you and I that attended the VSBA section, session on boundary policy, changed boundary, were you in there, too?
Yeah, yeah.
Really very, very good. And I would like to suggest that we have an opportunity, as board members, to talk about how we'd like to incorporate that. Now, Dr. Brabran, that may require some communication resources. I think this is an ongoing discussion. You, that drum, I've probably beaten in one side, and I got to go to the other, because so much of what we are trying to do here does require how we, as a board, are able to communicate what we're talking about, and how we're identifying. Because when I, I went back and looked at your Brabran briefings for the last couple of times, there was no mention of Page 40, the blank Page 40, the Page 46. I understand, we're just kind of walking through a new thing, but I always have to think about, what does it look like if we're looking in? So I'll stop there, because I do want my remaining 29.
Listen, point well taken. And, and the truth is, it's a point well taken, and I think if we thought about it, had a little bit more time to have thought through, with a new board, old policy, what would have been the right way? We could have, we could have maybe reached out to leadership to think about how to best present it. But, you know, sometimes, good intentions, trying to think about the lens of the community, it's a blank page versus this page today. It's good feedback, we're not going to do it again that way, and we'll have a new process to confirm by the consultant for next spring. But I understand.
No, it's okay. I think that the importance of saying that is how we make changes, right? When we vote on something, the community relies on that. And so I would, as, as a possible next step, if I may, Madam Chair, Corbett Sanders, if we can perhaps set up a time when, or how we, how are we going to frame out that discussion, so that it is a transparent way for the community to see how we're even preparing to hear from the expert, and how we plan on guiding the expert with respect to our concerns here in Fairfax County?
Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Pokarsky.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith, for your clarification regarding Table 7. That was really very helpful. Jeff, I definitely understand the discomfort that you have regarding some of your responses to us, because we're kind of wrestling with the same thing, because it seems to be out of sequence. We're asking you to make determinations on things that will hopefully become clearer, once we have the information that we don't yet have. So I realize where you are, and I will keep that in mind, as I pepper you with more questions. I do have a question regarding Glen Forest. Glen Forest has been on this list since the previous CIP. There were at least three meetings with the community that I know of, one at which I was in attendance. Now that we're back on the new Page 40, does that put us right back to the start of the process, or is there some sort of possibility to expedite that process, given that the only change from the Glen Forest issues of this time versus last time is a broader scope in terms of other schools that will be looked at? Can you speak to that for me, please?
So the only community meeting that we had in, in regards to the boundary policy, or the boundary adjustment, the potential for it, was in June 2019. You attended that one. That was the potential scoping. So the, the school board had approved a scope for Glen Forest to include Bailey's and Park Lawn Elementary Schools. We took that out to the community, and received feedback from the community. Now we're going through the community comments, and providing alternate options based on community input. So that's where we are right now. The next meeting would be a potential options for the Glen Forest community to consider, with the revised options based on the feedback that we received at that June 10 meeting.
Okay.
And then, once we have that meeting with the community, we bring that back to the board, then, for discussion and decision.
So to answer your question, it doesn't need to be, it's already underway.
Okay. So we're not starting from square one, per se? And just, I won't speak to that. My last point is more of a process question. One of the things that I didn't realize before I first work session that we attended as new members, was that we have some time that we need for next steps. I would suggest kindly that we build into, we build that into our agenda, because last time, it took from 15 to 30 minutes for us to complete the next steps, which means that we were short that much time for that agenda item. So moving forward, if we have two hours for this, it's really an hour and a half, with a half hour for the next steps building, et cetera. I'd just like to put that forward for consideration. That's how it's supposed to work? Okay, we need a better timekeeper.
Well, I mean, and-
I will be the timekeeper. I love that job.
No, 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 I was, I was definitely mindful of this, and that's why I pointed out that we would go over. I, I don't think two hours was ever realistic, honestly, for this conversation, plus follow-up steps. Not to mention, there's no buffer time between both sessions. So I actually just sent an email about this to our team to discuss, and I look forward to seeing where we can take that. Yeah. But, did you, did you want to say anything else with your job? Okay. Go ahead.
Just for clarification's sake, when we added this to the agenda, the concept was that we were going to have CIP and sustainability as one presentation, and then have a conversation about it. When we came in this evening, that's when I saw that it was broken up into agenda items. So that may have, if we had presented the two as one, then it might have been more succinct.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, Ms. Pokarsky, followed by Mr. Frisch. And that's all I have for go-backs, so if anyone else, okay, we're going to call it at that point. Thank you.
I want to be mindful of time, and I think there's going to be a lot more discussion coming up. This process is so disjointed for me, but I would advocate for keeping that Table 7 pretty short this time, because it does sound we're going to have a lot of conversation coming up pretty soon. So I would like to keep it to something that is actually workable for this coming year. And I would like to- And I would like to keep Table 8. I think it's important to our community that they know that we realize there are hotspots and issues around the county, you know? And maybe it's a matter of how we word that to communicate effectively, but I would like to see that in there.
Do you want staff to respond?
That was just coming.
Okay, Mr. Frisch.
All right. I'm gonna ask some questions, and we can get to them after I finish going through them. But I think one thing that would help the community and some folks at the table who are looking at not just boundaries, but other considerations for capacity relief in the form of enhancements, when we talk about adding these non-renovation enhancements for capacity, and we know that that extends the cycle between renovations, and yet, every bond, there's a few of these projects in there, can you walk through, once I get through the rest of my questions, the process by which these schools are ending up in the bond for these capacity enhancements that are technically off calendar, cuz they're not part of the renovation cycle or the, you know, new schools? Second, I think there's general confusion about the capacity numbers in the CIP, especially for folks that are not deep in these issues. It's kind of like when the weatherman says feels like, you know? It's like, it's not really 20 degrees, but it feels like 10, right? You know, when we say 125% capacity, that doesn't mean that we have students learning on top of school buildings and underneath trees, right? Although underneath trees doesn't sound so bad to me as an option. Perhaps the CIP could do a better job of calling out a fake school with a fake example that tells you, sometimes we have classrooms that can fit 30 that are used for four, and so that plays into why we end up with these ballooned capacity numbers for a smaller number of students. Finally, one thing that might help, a lot of the issues that we talk about are for these schools that are over 114% capacity. For elementary schools, I think three of the top five are from Providence District. One thing that would be helpful, and I don't think this is necessarily feasible right now, but it'd be helpful to get a one-paragraph summary for those schools, because there's not as many of the over 114% as there are for others, and those are the ones that we're trying to address with all these issues. A one-paragraph summary of where we stand on the issues that we've tried to resolve there. Have we gone through the process of making sure that we're using the space efficiently on the inside? Have we had meetings with the community about possible boundary adjustments? Have we looked at capacity? Just so that it's spelled out in more detail than the alphabet soup that we put on page 99, or whatever it is. I think that's it. Oh, and then, last but not least, could you give us an update on Shreve Wood, similar to how you did on Glen Forest? What steps have been taken thus far? I know there was a community meeting where boundaries were discussed, so.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Frisch. Out of those four elements, right, I really enjoyed the suggestion that we have the one-paragraph statement of what we've done are the ones that met the highest criteria, to further articulate and communicate what we have done: interior modifications, architect, capacity architect, program, space allotment, and so on. So that, we've reflected that in the notes as a recommended improvement, right? The first item that you mentioned was adding non-renovation enhancements for capacity, in other words additions, where we provide additions in the CIP, and we do things like that, or modulators, that do detract from the renovation cycle. So the renovation cycle is currently 37 years, and to your point, every time we do an addition, it delays or defers or impacts the advancement of getting ahead of that 37-year renovation cycle. So how do these schools get included in CIP? Exactly what Dr. Braybrand mentioned before, that process about boundary adjustments and additions, and staff in conversations with individual board members had looked at providing additions and the old, and people use the term, building your way out of a problem. In some instances, an addition would be if there's gonna be an expansion in that area, and there may be no capacity in the surrounding area. That's the nicest way I can phrase it of my predecessors. But to your point, that's how a lot of those additions had gotten put in there. And, as I said, when we go in and do a renovation, we do accommodate some of the additional requirements as a part of that. That's a little more organic, but the other one is, as Dr. Braybrand mentioned, that was the first one you mentioned. Second one, further articulation of the impacts on class size. You mentioned special programs. I could say Title I. When we look at a building capacity versus program capacity, I do like the further articulation of what those impacts are as to why we have that difference. And we've got that in our notes as a recommended improvement. The third one, again, the one paragraph summary that you said, great suggestion. And then the fourth one is Shreve Wood, and I'll let Ms. Gillis talk a little bit to what's been done there.
So to clarify, the Shreve Wood community meeting was actually a PTA meeting that Dr. Zuluaga invited school board member Dahlia Palczak and myself to attend, to walk the community through capacity, what does it mean to be overcapacity, to have a similar discussion to the way that you phrased it, no one sitting on a rooftop or under a tree. So we talked about what capacity was, we talked about the trailers that are there and how that affects the capacity, and how it looks like they're overcapacity with trailers, et cetera. And the second part was, they asked me to just walk them through what the boundary process would be. So if they were starting a boundary process, what would it look like, where we would have community meetings to review the scope, and then what the public engagement piece was? So just to clarify, we haven't had any boundary meetings with Shreve Wood. We did have one PTA meeting to just discuss what capacity was, and then also to discuss what the process would be.
Right, thank you.
What I was saying is, and we don't have an approved scope. So if, in order to get that started, we have to have concurrence as to what that scope may be.
Thank you. Ms. Kies-Gamara, 30 seconds, please.
Absolutely. I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Corbett-Sanders' concerns about Table 8, and I hear some of my colleagues saying they want it to stay. I'm wondering if we can address the concern with a different name, so that we are not suggesting something more with that language, so it could be something more nebulous, like we are monitoring capacity concerns or something, so that it doesn't look like we're promising anything. That's all I wanted to say. You didn't time me?
I was watching. You hit 30. Thank you. It was perfect, yeah. Okay. So in lieu of doing, as I said, you know, follow-up right now, please, you know, note your thoughts, and then we'll do that at the end of our renewable energy report, which we're excited for in unfortunate meeting circumstances, but please.
Well, thank you very much for giving the opportunity for us to go through the renewable energy report. And, you know, these two items were inclusive in our minds, because we're still up here presenting them. So although I had the two different elements, it really is something that I wanted to go through. I'm really excited about what we've been doing in the space of renewable energy. I mean, when you think about where this board has come from, all the prior board members, and then this new board, and a lot of the initiatives, a lot of the work from JET and the partnership with the county, and the goals, the Get to Green program, how that's evolved, has truly been remarkable in the time that I've been here. In the first slide that we'll go through, let me get the channel changer. I really refer to this as the three-legged stool, and I'm gonna go through this presentation with enough pace so that you can ask your questions and be more informed in the discussion, and try to regain some time. But really, it's a three-legged stool, and the three-legged stool includes your base, or if you look at an energy pyramid that I'll show later. And your base is really your energy efficiency. How are you doing your cost savings? What are you doing from a physical plant? The second thing is, how are you providing sustainable elements? What is your growth, and then your development of a vision about renewable energy and so on? And all of that, the other leg of that stool, that three-legged stool, is the policies. And in here, we have the resolution that was provided. In October 2018, the board passed an important environmental initiatives on resolution on climate change action. There are a number of different things, and there's a board policy that also talks to renewables and sustainability. In going through that, conservation, basically smart stewardship, you take a look at what we've done, the savings that we've done since January 24th, turning 31 million, really, I won't belabor that, but it's really amazing if you look at our resource stewardship and how we've grown at the time that we've been reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. What am I talking about? We've gotten over 27% reduction in the past eight years, while we've grown over a million square feet, and that's nothing short of huge. And I mentioned the policy that the board has under, that's one of the underarching elements. When we talk about benchmarking success, we take a look at JET, our new joint task force on environmental sustainability, and the efforts in the group movement in that direction, our plan, how we perform and how we monitor. And when we compare ourselves with the initial plan, the CHIPS verification, our benchmarking really had been from Energy Star, which really, we've got every one of our schools that are eligible for Energy Star certification. I promote that and I talk about that, because that's third-party vetted, and I know Ms. Tollent talked about the CHIPS getting us to not self-verify and be third-partyed, but the third-party verification of the Energy Star process, we operate within the top 27% efficiency of peer group class facility plant. That is significant, people. It gets really tight up at the top of the pyramid, and when we talk about energy efficiency vetted by other people, we are the largest school district across the country with the highest number of Energy certified buildings, Energy Star certified buildings. That is significant. It's significant because 100% of all of our eligible facilities, and meaning all the ones that are renovation and so forth. Anyway, so all of that is massive. You should be very proud of not only the reduction of the greenhouse gas footprint, but also of the elements. And how do we do? We get ratings of recognition on environmental leadership. I won't belabor this, but it really is important. When I'm put on the spot about what are we doing as a school division, I need to take the time in the spotlight to articulate that we are constantly being recognized as energy leaders, not only in the county, not only in the Commonwealth, but across the country. We've got a long way to go. We've got a lot of new initiatives that are out there, and I'm really excited about the direction that we're heading in. But please, take the time, you know, they say, raise the praise and minimize the criticize. They talk about celebrating the successes, and the successes that we've had are pretty amazing, folks, and it's all because of your leadership and the partnership, the Get to Green, by working, how we've come from the instructional components tied with the operational components, tied with the community, tied with some of the advisory and advocacy groups. It's really getting to the point where I think we're gelling to a level that we never have before, and I'm kinda proud of that. So I talked about the energy pyramid. When we talk about, and some of these categories that we articulate about where we are actually having our energy footprint and what our costs are, but really, the energy pyramid talks about, the beginning about energy conservation and consumption, really, energy efficiency being your second level, energy demand being your third, and then renewables at the top. And if you take a look at where we've come from and where our savings are, we really, some of the things that we talk about in terms of energy demand, we talk about the peak shaving and some of those load shifting, and the reality is, it's just managing your business model better, and really taking a look at the things that we can do. And as these things continue to grow, as the idea about gaining renewable energy and storage and redistribution continue to grow, we have the opportunity to shave those, and also, hopefully in the future, as a number of you mentioned, really get off the consumption grid. And that's the whole idea of renewables. FCPS and solar, we've had a sustainable footprint for quite a while, but it's been, it hasn't been systemic. And it has been, in the past, more organic at a localized level, where we've put solar panels and photovoltaic and solar hot water on a number of our school facilities. We've been getting our Wink-o-matics, the flashing 25 and 15 mile-per-hour signs, off the grid by putting them on solar, so they won't pay the monthly recurring, and then so we have renewables to go ahead and generate the energy for that. But as we continue to expand in that area, it's the examples of when you looked at Terracette and Terrace Center back in the late 70s and early 80s, those had solar power consumption to it, which hadn't been provided in school districts across the Commonwealth. Again, when you take a look at where we started, where we went to that more organic approach, and now where we're headed, it's moving constantly to the top of the energy pyramid. And when we look at what I was talking about in terms of the top of the energy pyramid, I'm talking about the solar power purchase agreement. When we take a look at the number of facilities that we have that were included in that, it really is pretty amazing that out of the number of schools that we had submitted in the first phase, they're looking at providing 87 schools selected for Phase 1. But I will go back and say, there are some inhibitions, you know, there's some challenges out there. I call them opportunities. Well, there's some opportunities, because we currently have, and now there's legislation that's pending, but we currently have an energy demand cap of 50 megawatts, okay, for renewables. Well, that's a cap, that's a barrier, that's a limiter, if you will, right? Well, there was only, what was the amount that was out there? No, before that, what was 46 or so that was available? It was already consumed, already obligated. It was 40-some percent. What was the amount? I got the rest, just tell me.
We took up the last six and a half.
Now, I know that answer, I'm asking about what the, okay. So the problem is, right, and I'm sorry, I'm putting Mr. Moss on the spot, but the reality is, I get jacked about this, because there was a limited top of the number of the cap. We had, out of that number of schools that we had in our first phase, and working with the vendor, there wasn't enough for the county and the schools all in it, because the energy cap was almost at the top. So what did we do? We locked in the max that was available. I'm sorry to my county friends, but we did it as a school system. Why? Because we saw that limiter. We shouldn't be having that conversation. We shouldn't be competing with each other. So I basically ripped off Arlington County or Loudoun County from getting any more of the cap that's available, but that's what we did, and that's what Justin was so excited to say. So I'm sorry I stole his thunder. But anyway, so it's one of those things where we've done a heck of a lot, and where are we going, right? The other thing that I'll mention about renewables is the partnership with the utility provider and the governor's office and one of the vendors. When we talk about the number of electric buses that we are looking at, again, Fairfax County received, through that grant application, the most buses of any other jurisdiction in the Commonwealth. That's in large part of the efforts of this body, of the recognition of our partners who happen to be sitting in the audience. I noticed one of my relatives back there, who I refer to as my cousin. And it's because of our constant involvement and articulation and the vision of this body that we've been recognized as a leader time and time again, and we're getting into the renewable component, and we're getting into that systemic, sustainable element. We've got a long way to go, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us. But even the conversations about net zero, about net zero-ready, about solar, about systemic, about the Get to Green program, all of these things, and the JET initiative, and the partnership of this body and the board of supervisors, all of them, in my opinion, are bullish on a cultural awakening and a comprehensive approach to renewables and sustainable, because it's not any one of each of our individual visions, it's all of our dreams and visions working together. Anyway, thank you. That's our presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I apologize for taking Mr. Moss's.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg and the staff team. We will go ahead with Mr. Frisch, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
All right, I'm gonna talk fast. First, I just wanna let my colleagues know that I'm going to be circulating a letter for folks to consider signing on to in support of Delegate Mark Keem's HB 1140, which would establish a grant fund for additional green buses, electric buses. Second, I'm excited about the solar being so much more expansive than we initially thought. One thing that I'm worried about that I'd love for you all to address is, will these solar arrays be battery-ready? I realize that we may not be at a point where we wanna put batteries on things yet, but they need to be battery-ready. It only increased the cost by about a quarter of a percent, but it could increase, we could pay 20 times that if they're not battery-ready when they're installed. Again, I'm gonna reiterate our intent, or at least some of our intent, to amend the CIP to push us towards net zero-ready schools. I have heard folks say that, you know, if you look at Discovery Elementary School in Arlington versus the cost of what it costs to build a school in Fairfax, there's this huge disparity. If you look at a regular old elementary school in Arlington, there's a huge disparity in how much they spend versus one of our elementary schools. So apples to apples, I think we can get it done for a price that we're comfortable with. One of the things, on Slide 4, if we could pull that up, yep, the thing that caught my eye... my eye was the fugitive refrigerants, because it sounds like a great television show, but the last, since two thousand and sixteen, it's kind of just blown up. I don't know if that's because we've only started measuring it then, or it's because things are aging at a faster clip, but I'd love for you all to address that. And then, one of the things that I would love to be able to do is, for those of us who are interested, would be to meet with our design and construction people and our energy management coordinator, just to get a even deeper dive on the work that we're doing, so that we can understand. We've made tremendous progress. People followed our lead, and now I see Arlington County with one net zero school and I think two more that are waiting certification. We've got Montgomery and other school divisions that are jumping on the bandwagon now. I would hate for us to lose that advantage. And similarly, I look at the awards and everything, and I think that's great too, but one of the things that I think colleagues have brought up before are these independently verified programs that we could be a part of, which I think is even better to brag about. So I'll leave that at that, and maybe hit more on the go-backs.
Mr. Moss, Justin Moss happens to be the Director of Facilities Management, and I'll let him address the combustion question. Battery-ready, and he's going to also address that as well. The net zero, we've had conversations about that, and I think, you know, it would have to be something where we would definitely have to come back and make sure it's comfortable, and I think you're right. I think we're at a point where we can take a look at that and see whether or not we're comfortable with where we are, because the devil is in the details, absolutely. And then I'm going to mention something about the solar, so go ahead.
All right, I'm going to address your battery-ready question first, because where we're at today with the solar power purchase agreement is, we've selected our partners. We're now just beginning the site assessments, and actually, that's beginning this week at eight sites for Solar Canopy with Sun Tribe Solar. Obviously, energy storage and distribution is very advantageous to us. We want to get there. It is a little bit more costly to do, and the technology is still, in my opinion--
Is it in the contract, though?
Yes, it is, in the contract. So to that point, and to your question specifically, when we do each site assessment, we will make that a priority to recommend to the vendors as an option, if available and if feasible to do so.
And what that means is, we'll come back to you with actually what the impact is. How they rate these things is how many years they'll get their payback, because it is a for-profit for them. But again, we think there may be some, a lot of it has to do with canopy, amount of energy they may produce, but it'll be something that we'll have to articulate about the impact and the costs associated, what the actual deal is.
As an add-on to that, with these assessments that we're doing for Canopy, we are asking the vendor, and they've agreed to do this for us with no additional extra charge, as to my understanding, that we'll do rough-in framework for electric vehicle charge stations for all Canopy Solar as part of that, for future sites for electric vehicle. And combustion, sorry. Oh, so for the greenhouse gas emissions piece, on the fugitive refrigerants, the reason that you see a slight increase over the last few years is due to the manner in which, we've always tracked it, but it's due to a new manner where we're at. Instead of tracking the amount that's issued out at the warehouse and returned to the warehouse, it's now a little bit more advanced, and this is part of the new EPA requirements for tracking fugitive refrigerants, where we're actually tracking the exact poundage that's being applied to new HVAC. So because of those methods, that's why you're starting to see an increase. It's a little bit more accurate representation, but it's due to a new method.
And the last comment we'll make is really, when you talk about working with our energy managers and the people that are working at the staff level, I certainly welcome that opportunity because I really think that that's, you know, you'll be able to get a lot of information about what we are doing, and also, they'll be able to share. I mean, Justin and I can share the vision very well. We've done it with our Get to Green partners and so on, but actually seeing that, I think, would definitely broaden their awareness and their exposure. I bring up this slide just to really point one last thing out. What I'm really jazzed about is not only solar arrays on the roofs, but I love the idea about canopies in parking areas. And because we have these two vendors, one of the vendors will be looking at that, and to me, that's, you know, why haven't I been doing that before? So.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Marin.
Well, as I've shared with prior boards and the public, I grew up in Northern California, and our neighbors had the solar panels on their roofs back in nineteen seventy-six. So the fact that we're now here looking at this, in our school divisions around the Washington metro area, if not nationally, it's extremely exciting. And as you said, one wonders why we haven't been doing this so much sooner. And to see canopies in the parking lots is just a whole nother area that I don't know that many people in the public realize, is just a whole nother way that we can capture energy in such a healthy manner for the planet. Mr. Frisch, I am very supportive of this proposal from Delegate Keem about additional buses. I will sign anything you put in front of me to get more of clean buses on our roadways. And I do appreciate you bringing up about the battery-ready. Anything we can do preemptively to cut costs is just a huge benefit. And I really am very supportive of what we can do as a division to join Montgomery and Arlington and others about getting net zero schools. So just wanted to make sure you knew about my shared passion, Mr. Plattenberg, for your excitement and where we can keep going and getting better on this. The one question I have is on slide thirteen, where I see that our energy cost projections are going down, which is great, and the projection outward in our utility use. My question is, I know that we'd had a third-party provider who had worked with us for several years. It's my understanding we're not using that group any longer. Is anyone helping us with our energy efficiency and usage? Because I'm not aware of what took place after we stopped working with the one company.
Excellent question, Ms. McLaughlin. Just to say, yes, what we did, a part of that process was, we didn't have the culture in Fairfax County. And a part of that acculturation was adopting those practices, doing the energy use of occupied and unoccupied, using the engineering services that were provided that were really ancillary, they weren't really contracted, to help us operate more efficiently. We had our staff working hand-in-hand with that vendor to learn the processes associated with it. So we have taken that, and now we employ our own staff, manage our own program for the continuance of it. So we have adopted and adapted, and we've learned the good, bad, and the ugly through the process, and we are now doing that, to your point. You raised another question about something else that I forgot.
What are we doing post the contract?
Oh, in addition, by the way, this slide, what I want to mention is, you know, they talk about energy conservation measures. We're also looking at continuance with the state, Department of Mine and Minerals. The staff, we've been talking with them about energy service contracts now, the ESCOs that had been done in the past in Fairfax County, and we had a good success with that. Well, we want to finish that vendor relationship and then get started as well on the potential for a new state contract with that to come in and do some of those initiatives as well. And in looking at what the state already has as a proviso for those things, it looks like there may be an opportunities with those that are state contracts already in existence, and they do have a renewable energy component to it. So we're kind of excited. We're looking further at that, and we'll be coming back to the board with anything we find.
Okay, the next question I have has to do with how our staff has responded to our energy-saving measures, because I had heard when we were first beginning this process, some of the staff were saying, in the buildings, the school buildings, people were saying, oh, my gosh, we're either freezing or we're really, really hot. And so, as you mentioned, this other third-party provider had helped us kind of adapt the culture, do the practices. Have you been able to take, no pun intended, the temperature of our school staff to know how they feel we're doing in that management?
Oh, yeah.
So it's Goldilocks, just right, not too hot, not too cold?
No, Goldilocks is still Goldilocks. We still have too hot, too cold, and right in the middle. And I could pull this room right now, but to your point, right, excellent point. The reality of it is, is that when the vendor came in and identified that we weren't managing our controls of occupancy well, and some of our equipment was being abused, leading to not meeting its useful life and higher costly repairs and so on, when we made those adjustments, there was some growing pains, no doubt. And then there were some things where I had maintenance issues that the vendor was getting blamed for, and then vice versa later on. So, yeah, we learned a lot in that initial process about understanding the culture of what is Fairfax County and the expectations. Where we had another opportunity was in training of the employees in their relationship with the staffs, so that if there were what we call comfort complaints at a local school, that they could get it addressed in a fairly responsive time. And Mr. Moss has done an outstanding job of making sure that communication coordination exists, where if principals have issues, that we continue that dialogue about how to address their comfort complaints. Interestingly, though, our policy set points were more extreme, in other words, hotter when it's hot, colder when it's cold, than what that vendor was using. It was really the practice. So it was the mindset and what people experienced as a part of that lack of communication coordination. But, yeah, we've learned a lot from that.
Thank you.
He wanted to add something, and I still have twenty-seven seconds to say something.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Just a quick add-on for the slide specific, because what we talked about, we have transitioned to an in-house behavior-based conservation program, and I think everybody's aware of that now. And what this slide represents, this is something that we shared with our FPAC members regarding what next with FCPS, and the big difference is, we've got really the behavior piece down, which is very difficult to implement. We're looking at now the infrastructure piece of it, and that's what this slide represents. This is what we recommended to FPAC, who I think recommended this to the board in July, is the whole Energy Savers Performance Contract from an infrastructure standpoint, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you. And I know this is about energy savings and conservation, but I'm just going to put the plug in also about just the environment in general. What can we do to make sure that all two hundred of our buildings and even our administrative buildings have the refillable water stations?
Well, that's an excellent question, again. What we've done is, we've been, again, organically, I've been taking money out of my own budget and putting seed money or grant money out there for local schools to compete with. That's been an offshoot of our Get to Green program to incentivize folks, but what we can do is, we can actually look to putting that, including that, in a part of our budget, and I think Dr. Bray Brown wants to--
Well, you know what, Jeff? How about for the board, we can just find out, what would it cost to have a filling station, one in every school, the ones that are missing? What's that cost? And the board can know that as they're thinking about the budget between now and certainly by the approved time, and sooner if you have it.
In my ten seconds, I'm going to hold up this plastic water bottle and just let everybody know that many of us on the board know it's time to get rid of these. We just need water filling stations, because I think it gives people peace of mind to know they're drinking safe water.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Marin, followed by Ms. Tolan, and then Ms. Sizemore-Hizer. And I just want to point out, I'm hoping that by seven forty-five, no, later, we can start with follow-up. So if anyone has a go-back, please, you know, flag that. I'm going to limit those to one minute, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
So I do want to say that I have seen the growth in what we've been doing. When I look at the two thousand and eighteen report, and I see, of course, the increase in solar, the gains in energy saving, I mean, it's clear, we really are doing work. So I'm super excited about that, and it's good to pause for a moment for that. I do wonder, though, since we have so many initiatives, what is our energy operations plan? Do we really have, like, a plan to, you know, further make sure that we're going in the right direction? You know, all these things that you've mentioned that need to be tweaked or added. And then I'll mention to that a second point, which is, I know because we like a challenge here in Fairfax, that as we think of not only going to net zero, but there is additional, you know, design practices that I'm learning about, that I'm wondering if we're aware of, that will help us think of what happens to these buildings we're building now in fifty years. So that's things like electrification, so ensuring that as we're building things, that they're being set up, so functions like heating, like cooling, are going to be able to be replaced, and we're moving away from fossil fuels. So that happens now on the front end, as we're designing, even if we're currently designing non-net zero buildings, that we're designing them for electrification, and then relatedly, the idea of the circular economy, so that as we're building buildings, we're already thinking about what waste we're going to produce as we're building, and then as they get deconstructed in fifty years or whatever, what we're designing for that disassembly. So that, those are really the up-and-coming trends, you know, and so I would hope that, because we like these challenges, that we will look to those design practices. And then the third point I'll make is that, because of our size, because of the expertise needed, do we need to have outside expertise come and help us make these transitions? You know, you all work incredibly hard, these are new technologies, and some people are doing them really well. So I'm certainly open to finding outside expertise, if it means creating more efficient building, saving us money, saving us energy. And lastly, I'll add that while I'm thrilled at the pure energy and cost savings, what most excites me is the connection to instruction. And while making any building more energy-efficient is wonderful, we get a double win, because we can use those facilities as learning environments. And I've been to lead platinum schools out in Colorado, where they're beautiful, but the opportunities for students to learn about, you know, how do you analyze this data and use this data, like, they hadn't been yet set up because they were new. But so, connecting to instruction, and I think that, you know, thinking about Get to Green, ECHO schools, I was at Flint Hill Elementary School today, one of our premier ECHO school, Green Flag Schools, my own children's school, we're just starting the ECHO team, and I'm on the energy team, helping the students do energy audits, but it's about operationalizing this. It's no more of the opt-in, how do we operationalize every school to be connecting the instruction with these environmental lessons? So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin.
Yeah, if I could. We have the most leading professionals on our staff in terms of design and construction. It's a blue-chip operation. It's been recognized nationally and internationally. The work I do internationally is because of that, and that keeps us current on the leading edge and not the bleeding edge. I can tell you, the staff expertise is not to be questioned in terms of their capacity. Our partnership with the groups that we have, and as an extension of the JET team, really keep us all current on where we're going to go. And to your point about us making it operationalized, an excellent point, because that's exactly, you know, I always say, this is our time, that's why we're here, and I think this body is standing on the shoulders of the obers before us, and those were from those before them. And I believe that together, we have more of a comprehensive approach to our sustainable initiatives. So we've got incredible talent going on, and to your point, Ms. Marin, when you talk about the instructional program, you're spot on. When we talk about the Get to Green program, and it started with a handful of individual schools, to have it evolve to where my staff designed in partnership the website, the interface on that website, but the meat in that website came from every disparate group, and that was bringing all those different disparate, separate parts together, so that the instructional piece is there now, and the imparting of that. It has gotten to a point where we have over a hundred and thirty schools that are involved in the Get to Green program when it started out with just a handful. And so, to see that evolution, I am excited about, and that's why I get really beefed up, but I love the challenge to say, this has to be more systemic, this has to be operationalized. And I believe our comprehensive approach is getting us to that end. So I think it's in concert with exactly the direction that we speak of in this presentation, and certainly some of the concepts that are talked about. I can talk about in great detail about the different types of certification programs and the marketing of those programs and the investments behind them, with the benefit, every one of them has a benefit, a pro and a con. So, yeah, it's absolutely our time to be comprehensively looking at it. So thank you for your comments.
Ms. Tolan.
Yes, first of all, of course, I was going to bring up the tie to instruction, the one thing I just want to add to what Melanie said, which I agree with everything, of course, you know, that using the building as a learning environment is key, and workforce development, you know, in the green economy is, I think, something that we need to look at as well. If we're going to be implementing these kinds of sustainable features in our buildings, you know, working with our CTE folks on, you know, how do we look at developing expertise in our students for this economy is important. You know, we've got, as we've mentioned, you know, we've got thousands of students out there engaged in, you know, working on, you know, project-based learning, learning a portion of our graduate skills, all around environmental stewardship, but I think we do need to look closely at how do we support those teams and make sure that they have the support that they need from the district level to make sure that we aren't relying on, you know, that one staff person in the building and, you know, overwhelming them. We really need to look at what those teams need to get their work done. I just want to point out, too, that in Virginia, you know, Virginia Beach, Rockingham County, Alamo, they have great examples that we can look at in how they're utilizing their lead, you know, certified buildings. We don't-- We don't have to go far to, you know, maybe get some lessons learned. And it's an exciting time, just since staff is changing and growing in this area. You've got a relatively new energy manager, you've got a new coordinator, thanks to the previous board, you know, that was just put in place to look at, you know, working between instruction and facilities. And you have a sustainability coordinator that just retired, so you've got a new person coming on there. So I think it's a really great opportunity, the Jets also, to look at, you know, working with the new staff and the new energy that we have, to look at, you know, really setting solid sustainability goals. I mean, we've tossed around this idea even of, you know, carbon-free with the county, carbon-free by 2030, you know, setting some really substantial goals, and then figuring out how we work toward those, you know, with solid goals, steps, you know, measures, you know, how do we get there? And I think we're in a good position with this incredible staff to figure that out. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you very much. I had just had a couple of questions on these charts. First of all, I'm going to echo what everybody else said, and I'm not going to go into detail because we've been here for a while. I'm super excited about this work. I'm also a fellow Northern Californian, and this is work we've been seeing there for many, many years. So I think this is fantastic. But just for my own edification on the slides, the slide on page 13, which is one that's up here, a couple of questions. It says at the bottom, and this may just be in the title, leveraging future energy-saving dollars for capital improvements. Is that just saying that we'll save monies so we can make capital improvements? Or is there some sort of tie to the energy savings to capital improvements as opposed to just savings and money that can be used for whatever the board and staff recommend?
Yeah. It really is my subliminal messaging to remember, facilities is your friend. Yeah. So reinvest in the future, and we'll do well together.
That's what I thought, but I wanted just to make sure that there wasn't some sort of policy. The other question on, if I'll follow up to that, is you've talked about behavioral changes that we sort of put in place in terms of better use of lights, and it's freezing in here, but things like that. And also in terms of replacing aging equipment, some of these green buildings. When you talk about the energy savings to date, sort of on that chart, starting about fiscal year '14 to '19, do we have a breakdown of knowing, and maybe we don't know, what's related to what? How much is related to behavioral changes versus replacing aging equipment versus changing, you know, new construction, the way we've done new construction? Do we know what's driving our savings to date?
Absolutely. We actually do have a breakdown, and the green on this chart represents the outcome from our behavioral, energy conservation program. And we can provide a detailed breakdown because we had to track that pretty robustly over the last five years to break those numbers down.
Great. I just, I mean, I don't need a lot of follow-up. I'm just kind of curious, sort of in terms of where our savings have come from. Then on page eight, you talked about updating aging models as a way of energy efficiency. But I also know in conversations with you, Mr. Plattenberg, about the issues of having enough funding to do proactive versus reactive maintenance and repair. How much is that issue of funding around not being able to do as much proactive maintenance and even sort of reactive repair that's not emergency impacting our ability for our infrastructure to do the work it's supposed to do as efficiently as it's supposed to do? So what I'm trying to say is, let's say we replace a model with something new, or we spend a lot of money replacing the model, but we're not doing the maintenance that we need to do because of lack of funding, is that impacting its ability to operate at the efficient energy that we would hope it would?
It is, but it's kind of like even expanded, I kind of flipped that because our folks have been incredible at stretching things out to making them work longer, but they're working inefficiently.
That was my question.
Yeah. So if that's your point, yes, we are doing that. It's beyond 80%, you know, the Pareto Principle, 80% of reactive rather than 80% proactive. We've got it backwards in terms of the staffing capacity and the funding on our replacement equipment. I know we're talking about doing that, doing a better job, and working with the county, trying to find different ways to increase that total amount. What's the total amount that we are behind our, it's useful.
Total, all up is 184. Total unfunded is 152 million.
Annually.
If I recall, it seemed like it was almost, most of the needs were unfunded from the chart that you showed. It was like, to that point, what I, I'm curious if there's some way that you're capturing on a system-wide scale as to what that sort of lack of ability to maintain at an optimal way is costing us in energy efficiency?
Yeah, I'll have to speak with Mr. Lord about that and follow up with you about the energy efficiency piece. We've been doing it in terms of a cost, and there are some national standards that are out there, the APPA standard, on what you're supposed to invest in for replacement. And what we actually invest in, it's sort of like, well, .14, I think 14%, you should be investing, and we're like .004. It's kind of crazy. But in terms of the energy, we'll see if Mr. Lord can't give us some kind of breakdown about that impact.
I just would like, as someone who's, you know, we're looking at different budget priorities, to know how much is our inability to fund costing us in real dollars, and not just in equipment, but in energy efficiency. And one last question about the behavioral, I don't know the piece of it. Is it mostly behavioral around training our administrators and our staff on sort of energy efficiency behaviors? Are we also taking that into our classrooms and sort of modeling for our students and also pointing out in our students, not just sort of teaching them about energy efficiency, but saying, here's all the pieces that's happening in our school, because that's a great opportunity for sort of project-based and real-world education? So...
We do. We have our teams that go out in individual schools that do that kind of learning process. A lot of our students are really a little more advanced than some of our administrators. So in this endeavor, and so there is a training to that piece. Some of it was really taking a look at the occupancy and dealing with that and making sure the facility and the space was comfortable in the time you used it versus some of our legacy systems. Taking a look at compatible schools that are similar size, a similar chassis, if you will, and seeing the operational effects. Why did we have Westfield that was really just running 24/7 and burning energy constantly, and South County was most efficient, laying the same chassis and accounting for the little bit of an addition? And through conversation and dialogue, we were able to dial those back, get people working together, and really sharing and shadowing a little bit about how to operate their facilities. So yeah, it's a combination.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'll be quick because most of the conversation about operational efficiencies in our buildings and having an energy plan, I fully support. I also support the letter that Mr. Frisch is going to send out. The one area that I'd like to add is a question regarding these buses, the eight buses with the potential for more, and whether or not we would look at putting a broadband capability on those buses so that we could possibly park them somewhere and actually provide broadband in some of the areas that our families don't have access to broadband. Similarly, I know that Delegate Kresek from my area is very concerned about seat belts and whether or not the new buses will have seat belts as well.
Yeah, I'm told that they will have seat belts, and regarding the other one, we can take a look, and I can come back with some...
Anyone? Anyone else? Okay. I echo everything everyone said. I had one other thing that wasn't mentioned, so that I don't repeat anything else. In terms of prioritization of the schools for rollout, I'm thinking from an equity perspective here. I love that I'm seeing, you know, a lot of Region III schools, a good spread of which schools are going to have this kind of programming. So on page, I'm looking at slide 12. If you can just provide, even for the public's sake, just some sense of how we're prioritizing which schools are going to be.
Yeah, well, clearly, this is a vendor model, and the response from the vendor is looking at what their best recoup on their investment. Certainly, we can ask them as part of an equity piece of whether or not they can distribute that, and hopefully it'll be. But I think the technical first aspect is them looking specifically at the technical elements of a physical plant, where they can get the most bang for their buck, so to speak. So, but we certainly can bring that up in the conversation with them, so.
Yeah, please, if we can add that as a follow-on. Thank you. The prioritization of schools for rolling out these solar panels and environmental programs for equity considerations.
Yeah, if, I may just want, just an add-on to Jeff's. After the RFP was issued, a Joint Selection Advisory Committee was established with county and school personnel to go over every site, county and schools, and work with the vendors to identify from the vendor perspective and from the entity perspective which ones were the most solar-ready. So that was really the lens that it was being viewed at in terms of an operational standpoint.
Thank you. Okay, we have met our goal, so now we can move on to follow-up steps. I do want to say, you know, several board members sent some notes, we apologize sincerely to the public that we have not kept up with our agenda here, and look forward to, as we've said, discussing process and figuring out a better way forward. But we can go ahead, Madam Clerk, if you can help us with that. Okay, so folks can take a look, make sure that anything they listed, both from the CIP conversation and the Renewable Energy Report, follow-on is mentioned. Okay. Looks good to everyone? No concerns? Raise your hand now. Yeah? Please, Ms. Kizgamaro.
So the first one, schedule a work session to discuss possible communication framework for the work of the boundary consultant. I think that meant, I think what I was talking about was more with respect to what our priorities were. I mean, the, so that we could feed into, we could provide our concerns collectively and also communicate those concerns to the community. So we would, it would serve two purposes. One, the boundary consultant would be able to understand what our concerns were, and the community would have an opportunity and the benefit of public meetings and discussions to understand what those concerns are. So that as we develop, it's not all of a sudden we're putting this out, but they are seeing the process of that discussion was what I had in my mind.
Is this the A through H? Is the scoping process, is that what you were referring to?
No, I'm talking about... 251.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Schedule a work session to discuss possible, a possible communication framework. Okay, I would say, sorry, let me start over. Schedule a work session to discuss possible board priorities leading up to the discussion with the boundary consultant. And also improve communication with the community about the topic.
Marty, can I ask you a question on this? Is there anything stopping us from, with the consultant, much like we've done for discipline, much like we're doing for AAP tonight, to break out having a preliminary report from the consultant and then having the final so they can kind of give the board, can get feedback, talk about a communications plan with whatever, the final recommendations, and just break it into two?
The scope is actually written that way. So it's first to look at the first review of the policy and then to look at, looking down the road. So we're going to have those conversations with the vendor this coming week and can have that discussion. But the first look is really a review of the policy. So I wouldn't want the board to think that we were going to get too much or too far down the road with the first review before getting that information back from the board about our current policy, and then we think about moving forward. But certainly, taking into consideration the board wanting to provide that input at some point with the vendor.
So I have two concerns, and I guess that's why I wanted to identify this. One is that we have some discussion so that the community understands what our concerns are. And two, that we talk about how we are communicating with the community about this process. I'm a little, I'm very concerned about that, and that is the reason that I thought that it could all be a part of how we're dealing with this boundary. You know what I mean? It could feed into the discussion with the boundary consultant.
And we could certainly have that conversation at chairs about how we might schedule something for that.
Karen, I have a question on that. I know what you're trying to do, but I don't want to mix it too much in the wash. I want the first part of this boundary discussion to be exactly the best practices and what this should look like. And then once we have a frame, is that what's supposed to happen during that first blush?
Yes.
Yes. And then after we have that framework, if we can agree to that framework, then having that discussion consequently. Because if we don't do it, if we do it, it's a little cart before the horse, I think. Because what we're doing is we are coming to a place where we are hearing, as we had wanted to, what are best practices in the boundary and what criteria should we look at? And once we, as a body, look at that and say, this is kind of where I'm going, then the conversation will be easier to then look at those schools that are on the table and we've been discussing today. But I feel if we do it in tandem...
I think, I think your part is a little bit further down the road in the sense of, I'm not talking about the specific schools the way we were talking about. I was talking about stepping back a little bit as to how we deal with it and how we communicate with the community. I think we lose, so maybe, maybe perhaps a compromise...
Are you talking more, just want to have a dialogue, just so I can understand. Are you talking more about communication on and out to the public?
That is a big part of what I'm saying. So perhaps, I think, to address the concern I think I'm hearing from you, we allow, we look to the boundary consultant to help us understand the best practices, okay? I don't want to mess with that. I want to make that clear. But I do also think that we need to talk about somehow incorporating how the community comes along and has a better understanding of the process. For example, opening up the CIP and having the process of A through H, those options does not really inform the community because they don't understand what is happening along the way. So perhaps we need to have some, perhaps there's two steps to this. One is, how do we want to improve our communications with the community regarding this process? And then the second is, how do we incorporate these best practices into that process? So there would be a part B of that. Does that make more sense?
That makes sense, and I agree with that, yes.
Okay. So the question is, how do we say it? I'm sorry?
It's my understanding that that's how the contract is structured, that it's two parts. One is that their best foot, their best experience, their best recommendations for best practices. The other is how to best engage the community in the process to be able to bring the community along with us, how we all together go down this journey of addressing whether these are the best, whether we have our best practices in place currently, and if not, what do we need to do to change them to continue to be the world-class system we are?
So the other part of my thinking was that VSBA presentation on boundaries, right, that has not been shared with this whole board. And I would like to, do you understand what I'm talking about?
And I actually sent something to VSBA shortly after, asking them to send me that presentation, and they said they would, but they never have. So I will take it upon myself to reach out again and ask for that.
So I think perhaps now we're talking about focusing on the communication aspect of it and how our board can more feed into that process and then connect the second part of that with the consultant.
You want to separate those two?
Let me see if I can help with this.
Okay.
Jessica or Marty, tell me who. The consultant is going to look at best practices for boundary policy, correct?
Yes.
Is the consultant also going to look at best practices and how to engage the community through a boundary process?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I think Ms. Kizgamar is also saying, how do we as staff engage the community in the consultant bringing both of those pieces? Right? Because the consultant is going to bring best practices in boundary policy and best practices around community engagement. Are you also saying, we need to be explained to our community now, hey, a consultant's coming, it's two pieces, they're going to give us advice on boundary policy and on community engagement, and we'll keep you posted when the consultant's going to bring their preliminary recommendations, when we'll have a final vote by the board? Is that what you mean, too?
That is a part of the, that is a part of the process, but I also wanted to include what we were able to enjoy by going, and I think Ms. Lord, were you in that session? I think.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think by virtue of us having and helping to inform the community of where we are, we can also... we can also be talking about some of the things that we know, we gathered from that session. So that is the reason I think it may well fall under a works.
So is your wording saying something like, schedule a work session to discuss possible board communication strategies about the upcoming boundary consultants' work around best practices in boundary policy and community engagement?
If you understand what that means, and it says what I said, I'm good with it.
Okay.
But there are conversations and decisions we're making or having before, in the interim, right? Before the consultants come forward. And I think that's what we want to make sure we discuss our public engagement plan for that.
I don't want this to be sort of the, we can't talk about it, litigation kind of thing, but this is, hey, this is where we are, and this is what we're doing, and we're learning about this, and we want to make sure the community understands.
I think you're saying, have staff develop a current, a current communication strategy around the current status of boundary policy and work and future work that will be coming this year?
Current status. I do not want to go back over, yeah. Yeah. That's why I said, if he understands what I'm saying, I don't have to keep talking about it.
And I suggest that we try to figure something out at chairs, and we will send it out to the board with how we will proceed. Thank you.
Any other, yeah, Laura Jane.
I was just going to ask a couple, I just wanted some clarification. 250, when we're talking about specific delineation by school of steps taken in the scoping process, we, you're referring to page 40, right?
Yeah, schools that are on our list.
And then my other question was, on 248, it says, how will this impact on desegregation across the county?
I think it was resegregation.
Oh, my God, definitely resegregation.
I was just like, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth.
No, no, thank you, thank you.
But that did not seem like that was the goal of the...
Absolutely. And this was carried over from a previous meeting that isn't addressed. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Seismariser.
Thank you. I just wanted to, and I don't, maybe it was an early one, but I would like to know a little bit about sort of the effects of special programs that we've had on capacity in schools, and that may be something for a future CIP versus this one.
That was a previous next step, so we're addressing that.
And then the other one is on, if we could have more information, I think, to Mr. Frisch's point, about potential solutions and what has been done to sort of deal with capacity issues at schools that are identified at 120, 115% of capacity to see, yeah, to see, look, we've tried everything here, but this one, we may still have some room. That would be helpful.
Okay, folks, let's try to give this three more minutes. Ms. Tolan?
have a list of those concerns, but I did not want to look, it to look as though we were promising something. And so that was the purpose of that, so I'm not sure how that, I don't know that it...
Go ahead.
I'm just saying, it sounds like you may be saying something different, because the community now has a definition of hotspots in their brain. I'm not sure we want to go with that either.
Can staff maybe propose three to five, or I don't know, however many are reasonable titles? Is that fair? I mean, I'm just worried, we're not going to come up with it now.
I think that, I think the nugget is, you gave us feedback to relook at the naming of Table 8. Let us go back and think about it, work on it. And then if you don't like the name, we'll come up with something else.
All right. Ms. Pokarski was first, followed by Ms. McLaughlin. Also, guys, please, let's be mindful of time, try to be efficient, think of what you want to propose.
Very quickly, number 248, for your consideration, is that something staff should address now, can address now? Or is that really a conversation that needs to come into play when we're talking about the boundary policy? Just want to put that out there.
No, that's a fair point. I think, you know, when it was raised before, it was for future, so I just want to ensure it's a factor for consideration. Who was next? Ms. McLaughlin.
Perfect timing, Ms. Pokarski. That, that's my concern, that it's a very, it's well-intentioned but extremely broad, and I also worry about, A, how staff can tackle answering that, especially when the board is going to be having a boundary policy discussion. And I also worry about how it can be interpreted so many different ways, so...
No, no, logistically, I agree. We can, we can drop that. I guess I was concerned attention wasn't paid to it from a previous conversation, but sure, we can, we can remove it. Yeah, Ms. Seismariser.
Just really quick, I just didn't see, it captured what I talked about, my previous comment about looking at what potential solutions have been taken into account of those schools before determining the capacity. So it would be something like, provide information on what measures have been taking, taken at schools that are listed at 115% of capacity or higher to help maximize capacity use within the schools. The idea, again, to get an idea of, when we're looking at our schools, if everything, I think, I can't remember who made the point, everything's been done, it's a higher priority. Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson? No, you're done? Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Tolan?
I just want to agree with what Rocha was saying, because I think that gets at some of what I'm trying to get at in number 247 as well. If you look at, for, you know, high schools, elementary schools, middle schools, those schools that are at that, 115% or above, those are at the top of these charts. So, for example, I haven't talked about kindergartens, it's at the very top of the chart, but I know there's a big story there. I know there's a lot of work that's happened there. So I didn't, you know, you know, I know staff's been working on that, so I didn't want to just throw it out there on the list.
And in terms of a lift, I know that we wouldn't be able to do that kind of review for all of our schools for this upcoming CIP, so I want to put that out there. We can provide an update to the board, but in terms of our timeframe to do that work, that's extensive work, and we can provide that information, but we wouldn't be able to do that in this timeframe. And if there are specific schools that board members have questions about, you can certainly reach out, and we can answer questions that you might have about specific schools. But in terms of a comprehensive look for all those schools above a certain percentage within the current CIP, it would be difficult to do that and do that well for the board.
So with that, we are assuming this is our follow-on steps that we're agreeing to. I want to, thank you, Ms. Gillis, Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Moss, and Mr. Smith, for your time and patience and information. We look forward to following up on this. We will take strictly a five-minute break, okay? 8:05, we're all going to be back in our seats, ready to go. Thank you.